Just one second. I don't care about NFL ticket. What I want to see is that.
We have been announcing it as we did at the last meeting, but as you're doing your intro, you may want to tell them to sign up if they want to speak.
Like to call the special committee of the whole meeting for November 10th, 2025 to order. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Barazza? Absent. Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Farrenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
White? Absent. Two absent, twelve present.
Bob's on the call. Are you there, Bob? Can check your audio?
Thank you.
You're muted.
Got about 100 people in the room, Bob.
He's there, but we can't go until we acknowledge that he is participating. There you go.
Sorry, would not let me unmute. Present!
So all of them in process, the only one here. All right, reminder to anybody that comes up to use the microphone tonight. First, we have a sign up sheet over here, and second, make sure you can see the little green light on the microphone when you're talking. That way it gets broadcast and recorded. Thank you. Then, item three will be approval of minutes from October 28th, 2025, and November 3rd, 2025, special meeting. Anybody care to make a motion?
I moved.
Motion by Sulfah, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a few items to remove and then add or change to a different location. We're going to move 8.4 up to 8.15 to expedite just having more time for the discussion I know we're going to have. And then we are removing the executive session. We'll do that after the city council meets, so that way we don't have to clear the room in the middle of the two meetings. Okay, then we'll move on to item five, and I'm told we have somebody here for an item that is not on the agenda for tonight. Someone from the public that would like to address us. I believe that's you, sir.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I live, well, first I've been in Matavia since 1998, built a house over by the middle school. I moved to Forest Avenue the end of 2006. So I've been on the creek, on Mahoney Creek on Forest Avenue for almost 20 years. I've dealt with a lot of coyotes. They've become part of me, and I've dealt with them. Something's going on this year. I don't know if it's all the construction or whatever, but they seem to be a little bit more bolder. And if there's a show of hands, have you, has anybody here not met a coyote yet?
I've caught.
You all met coyotes, right? Has anybody ever tried to get a coyote to move away from you and your pet? Not very easily. Okay? And I have a, well, I've had a rescue animal now for about three years or so. She's getting a lot braver. She's had to. I have an invisible fence in my backyard. I have almost an acre. Not in, that's including the creek in my yard with a bridge. So I'm one of the bridge people on Forest Avenue. I don't live under it. If I did, I'd see a lot more coyotes. But they come and find me. I don't look for them. They're out at 9:30 in the morning. They're out at 5 o'clock in the evening. And seasonally, it gets, we have ups and downs, okay? Within the last two weeks, my dog's been pretty much three to four times now we've had confrontations. One resulted in the schools being shut down, which is a terrible situation, or schools being told that they might have to shut down or whatever. What happened is about 9:30-ish, quarter to 10 in the morning. Just let my dog out. I hear, I heard a loud noise. Went to the back door. I see a coyote running through the yard, and I heard, see her running kind of towards it. She's defending her yard. And I'm screaming like a maniac. And I've had one knee replaced in May, and I'm waiting on a second one. I can't run. Haven't ran in eight years, maybe longer. Haven't ran in eight years, maybe longer. That's why I have an invisible fence. That's why I train my dog. That's why I spent money on my fence and trained her the right way to stay in it, and she does. But she's being accosted out there. Now, that's nature, right? But when these coyotes now, they don't, you know, I'm, let me get back to, I do have a point here list, but. I had the, the police canvass the neighborhood the day of my screaming, and I had heard a loud noise myself. They canvassed the neighborhood. They came back to my house, and somehow I got fingers pointing at me that I have a loaded gun back by my back door, which is, in this day and age, that's a very hard accusation to take, and that's not the person I am. So if you want to judge people by looks, and I bring that up because now I got the Facebook crowd on me. I've been called names because they see me in my driveway because the police have been to my house twice now. Well, three times if we count the pre canvass and the after canvas. So somebody in my neighborhood directed them back to my house and told them that I have this going on in my house. Now, this is ridiculous. I do scream. I have to scream like a maniac. I actually couldn't talk the next day because they don't want to move. Okay? This one finally, you know, and I can't chase after it. So then, like I said, the police, I told them I was one screaming. I said, I heard the noise. Oh, whatever, but resources, you guys got it drawn up. It's a horrible situation. Okay? This is, then after that, I had two more encounters with the coyote because he's going to come back or she's going to come back. And I had, the last encounter was, well, I had one at five thirty in the afternoon, two days later. This was last week. I know we have a time change, okay, because I've been there a while. Understand it going to come out a little bit earlier, but I'm on the other side of my creek and have a golf cart because I can't walk. I have almost an acre. So I'm trying to get my maintenance done before the winter happens. I hear barking. It wasn't too typical. I got a coyote in my sights, and I'm going maniac on the door. It was a bark. It was annoying. I don't want to annoy my neighbors with a dog barking because I don't like their dog barking. Got my paint done, crawled down off my ladder, drive my golf cart up, ready to lay into my dog who's on the corner of my property, barking towards Forest Avenue, and there's a coyote five foot away from her standing on a berm. And my golf cart's not quiet. And I came up to her like, what the hell are you doing, you know? And I look, and there's beautiful majestic coyote standing there on the berm, and I get out in the golf cart, chase it. I would have jumped the curb if I could have, but I'm not going to ruin my golf court. So since the prior police incident, I bought an air horn. So I'm blowing my air horn at it, screaming. That entails a wellness check from the police, city police department, from my neighbors. Don't like to hear that either. Glad they did check in on me because I was shaken because I was pretty upset. And so with all that said, I know we can eradicate species, and that's not what I'm calling for, calling for us to be sensible, and I don't know if we can do some kind of study or keep a tally or any calls, or if you want to promote something out there. If you see a coyote, let us know. You guys want to send up a drone with night vision, that'd be perfect. And count the coyotes. You got videos out there? I don't know if the gentleman's here tonight. They took his video down off Facebook, and that's another thing. Facebook, we got eight groups in Batavia now because everybody likes to take, everybody you say coyote, you're banished. And it's ridiculous. Okay? We all have to coexist. My dog should every right, have every right to live in its yard in peace. Okay? But I should also be able to do what I've been doing without repercussions of having the police call to my house every time I do do it to try to scare off what I'm supposed to be doing because nobody else has any answers, I believe. We're not trying to get rid of the coyote. We can't get rid of that coyote. You all decided to live with the coyote. I think we need to take a step back and figure out how we're really living with the coyote. Okay? And anybody that says that a coyote will not attack a child, I have proof of that. I pulled it up because I've, I've done the Facebook debate for two days. Now, I know why it took me so long to get on Facebook, but I like to buy pinball machines, and I had to buy, I had to get on Facebook. I don't want to be on Facebook, but I'd like to let people know that there was a meeting tonight, if anybody else had any questions, or if we can figure out some system, even the bare minimum in Batavia, let's reprint for, if there's new people in the area that don't know what people may be doing, you know, it's the police officer, she was very nice the second time, said I could blow my horn all I want, I could scream all I want, until I believe in those ordinance, which nine thirty, ten o'clock, whatever day. But that school thing broke my heart, and I feel like my hands are tied now and, because I'm, you know, the school's in my backyard pretty much, and I guess I could yell pretty loud or loud enough for someone to call in that something's going on to warrant a drone in the air and everything else. So I don't know what, if you guys have any answers, like I said, I, you know, study whatever, we could at least put an article out because I've had in years past, I've had a neighbor, I don't know if you guys, how long you guys have been here, but the last five, six years, there was a three, or years ago, there was a three-legged coyote that made it through two winters. Now, how does a three-legged coyote make it through two winters? Someone's feeding it. Okay? So I think we have to reiterate all the, all my options that I can do to keep this coyote out of my yard and not have people calling the police on me. So that's all I got to express. I hope you guys can figure something out. Even a tally would be great. I really would hate to bother resources calling nine one one every time I see a coyote, and I'm not looking for them. My dog sees them out the window. I go to bed before dark or inside before dark. Sometimes it is in bed before dark, but I get up late. Like I said, I've seen them at eleven, I've seen it at nine, I've seen it at five daytime. Nighttime is theirs. I got coyotes that lived in my cottonwoods for, ever since I've been there. They don't bother me. I don't bother them. So I got, just want to put it out there, and if we could broach a subject again, maybe, you know, every, all the other answers out there that we're doing more construction and maybe they're losing or more of their habitat. And, you know, I know I live on Coyote Lane. It's the creek. I take pride in the creek. I've been involved with the creek. We've all dealt with the creek. You guys have done a fabulous job mitigating the creek. I appreciate it. Two thousand and fifteen, I could have put canoe on my deck and it would have been a resort because I am in the valley. So that's all I got to say, and I just hope there could, something could be done that can make people more aware and also let people know what somebody might be doing to, why there might be a reason. Thank you.
We, we have in the past put up posts on our website. Couple times a year it comes up and it's, you know, it's put out there to let people know, one, don't feed them, don't give them any reason to be in your backyard, but I just showed her, that's right across the street from my house, after they walked through my driveway while I was standing at the back of my truck. They have no fear anymore. They'll come right through your yard. I've had them over my four-foot fence on either side of my yard, and I have three dogs, so I understand exactly what you're worried about. And my fear is the littlest dog that I have, the rat terry, will be the one that attacks it. Because she's very territorial.
But you do see a lot of missing cat posters around, right? Are we seeing a lot of them? So you were going to say, so I hope somebody else says something to say.
Yeah, I think it would be worthwhile to just explore what other municipalities have done about this. I know when I lived in Denver many years ago, they had a pretty aggressive program, which involved public education, teaching people how to haze coyotes, how to secure your garbage, how to make where they, make their dens less accessible. So there's sort of the private property aspect, but then there are also things the city was able to do. I'm not super familiar with what it was, but it might be interesting to kind of get an idea of what else is out there because, you know, Alan, you're sharing other folks. I mean, it's, it's here.
It's becoming more and more common.
The less we can interact with coyotes, I, I like them. They're, they're pretty animals, but.
Oh, they're, they're ones here are hybrids or some because they're beautiful as hell, man.
Pretty white way over there, you know? I want them to be pretty somewhere else.
Well, that's when someone says, what do you want, you know, and they were here before you, you know? And I said, well, give me your address, I'll send them over to your house, okay? Or knock your house down and give them some more land back. I know it's, my house was built in nineteen fifty-nine. I, that was before I was born, barely, but, you know, I, that's what I'm saying. We all, it's like little seeds, little thing we just ignore, but, you know, when they won't move, when they won't budge, it's, it's a little, there's something going on. So.
Yeah, Ron, thanks for coming in and bringing this to our attention because often things like this just, you know, go or announce, and people just live with it. But it's, I, I've seen the brazenness of coyotes as well as of late around here. I had one stalk me on the golf course the other day for like four holes, literally did not leave within a hundred yards of me and just kept following me. So they're definitely something going on there, but I, I was just going to add on to Alderman Malone's comments and say, what about IDNR and any, any info they may have or?
You know, we've got great resources available to us through the county. They have some fantastic educational materials that we have relied on in the past, and, you know, this is just another great opportunity, like you said, to get that information out there, both from the perspective of, you know, what people can do to deter the, the animals, to haze them and, and keep the garbage secure, but also that people might be making loud noises to try to shoo them off of their property.
Well, that's, that's what I got going on. That's why I feel my hands are tied because, believe me, I, you know, I should be watching TV right now, so. You know, I appreciate your time, and I thank you for listening to me.
Alderman Braz?
I have just one more comment. The, on the city of Batavia Police Department page, there is the coyote management page on there, the link to that, and it also links to a lot of the county resources, and it, again, reiterates the list of things to do and not to.
It's on the police website?
Yeah, if you go to Batavia and public safety. And I also, I kind of back up to Mooseheart Woods, and I can hear packs of them attacking animals and screaming at night. Yeah.
Well, you know, maybe, you know, because when I had the four police officers the first time, they, nobody, that'd be a good idea, maybe if, you know, to say, hey, if there is a management system online. I mean, they were more focused on, you know, gunshot reports and screaming, you know, of a maniac or, you know, I can imagine. I, I have grandchildren, and it's, it's my worst. I, I feel so terrible that, that the kids would have to, you know, that's, they don't need any more to worry about. And this is, they, there is reports of coyotes attacking children. Now, I talked to Mr., Mr. Mayor here, you know, Bob Dahlstrom. He lets everybody, all the kids, walk across this bridge to J.B. Nelson. Well, it's time the kids start school, right? They're starting early morning. They're walking across that creek, and God forbid, you know, we got to figure out what our priorities are a little bit. I love the majestic peaks too, but, you know, they're, they're getting a little bit, like you just said, they don't want to move, and that's what I'm getting more and more of, and it's getting more and more, you know, like I said, now, just so we have awareness, and I appreciate you guys listening, so thank you.
It probably wouldn't harm to have, I mean, if we could just start a rough count of how many folks locally are reaching out to their staff or police or complaining of coyotes and them.
And I think we can move that information from just on the police portion of it to a rotation on the face of the, the city webpage.
That would be excellent because I also have a lot of relatives and ex-in-laws that like to send police report notices to my children about their father. So I haven't made one of those, and I don't think I made everyone for Batavia, but they got one there like, hey, Dad, what's going on? Or, you know, my son just circle it and like, there you go, you know, it's on there and, you know, and then, like you said, it's, he's, people take, you know, shots at you online that, you know, they like to, you know, I don't like the abuse, so.
We can't regulate that.
Well, I wish you could do something about that, so. At least there is one group out there, we'll at least, at least let me post the form. I think it's complaints in Batavia, and that's, I think they made that for me because all the other ones, you say the word coyote and you act like you're a mass murderer, and it's ridiculous, you know? Uh, nobody's, nobody's going off for that. It's just nobody, you just need them, they need to stay at night. The nighttime's their time. My dog right now is going nuts, looking all the way, staring at her out the back window right now because it's complete pitch black out there. And I tell her, you know, hey, it's nighttime, it's their time, leave it alone.
Okay.
And she doesn't go out at night, so thank you.
All right.
Your meeting too, thank you.
We'll move on then to the consent agenda. Alderman Baron?
There is nothing.
So Trivon is the presentation on.
I approve nothing.
Okay. And we'll move on to item seven, which is a presentation on Mahoney Creek watershed base plan.
Hello. I've been up here a couple times for Mahoney Creek, all the way dating back to twenty twenty when we started this venture with a watershed, and tonight I have our consultants, Logan Gilbertson and Cecily Coons, that worked with me on the watershed-based plan to present our plan. We submitted it back in March or April of twenty twenty-two to the I E P A and finally received our approval letter September of twenty twenty-five. So this is a formality, but to kind of go through that document, they have prepared a little presentation, and we'll briefly go through that with you guys, and I'm happy to pass this around, but at the end of the presentation is also the link, and it's on our website. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Pull this up and, all right. So thank you for having us back. You know, as Andrea mentioned, we've been here quite a few times over the years talking about Mahoney Creek, and this is kind of the culmination of the planning phase. So we'll go through this agenda relatively quickly. We're hoping to take less than ten minutes of your time, but I know there are some new faces here, so we want to go through the location, kind of the background of all the studies that we've done, the projects that have been implemented. Cecily Coons with us, she's the primary author of the report. She'll go through the meat and potatoes of it, and then I'll just give you a quick update on the status of everything. All right. So Mahoney Creek, as we've, we've heard recently, is one of the major streams in town. It's on the east side of the Fox River, drains about two square miles, and a nice thing about it is almost all of it is within the city of Batavia. Made a lot of our planning documents very easy. The only other major stakeholder is actually the Department of Energy out at Fermilab. Two point seven miles of stream that I have walked the entire thing. We've photographed it many times over the years, and we've seen it changing and improving over time. And it's actually a very nice little creek. I really like it. All right. Andrea mentioned we've been working on this in twenty twenty. So we, we actually started out doing just a, a stream assessment. You know, we wanted to see what, what does it look like? This is where we walked the whole thing, photo documented, took notes on every reach. Those are just the different segments of the creek. And one of our recommendations at that time was to do a watershed base plan. So kind of just semantics, but the master plan focused on the creek and flooding. The watershed base plan looked at the whole thirteen hundred square, thirteen hundred acres to really look at everything draining into the creek. So we did submit that plan to the EPA in twenty twenty-two and waited a very long time. But during that time, we actually got a couple of things done. In twenty twenty-two, we designed and constructed the two basins up near Kirk Road. Those are the headwaters of the Mahoney Creek Tributary. Those provide water quality benefits, but they also help with flood control. We applied for a couple grants along the way, and we actually were the recipient of a GIGO grant. It's the Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunity. So the EPA has given the city of Batavia over a half million dollars to implement the next project along the Mahoney Creek. And then, as was mentioned, we recently did finally hear back, the plan has been approved. So I'll pass it over to you.
Thanks. So the reason that the city wanted to develop a watershed base plan was so that they could determine the health of Mahoney Creek and the watershed, and it would give us an opportunity to quantify the amount of restoration and the types of restoration needed to improve and restore water quality. It also is an opportunity to identify actionable projects and policy updates to improve water quality and build community support to implement those projects over time. And most importantly, the, the watershed base plan prioritizes projects for funding, and once the plan is approved, like it is now, it opens the door to additional funding opportunities that weren't available without the plan. So as we said, we just received that final approval. I will not bore you with, by reading all of these, but these nine elements that are listed here are what we, that, these are the targets that. are listed here are what we, that, these are the targets that we hit within the planning process and IEP A agrees that, that we met that target. And, um, the goals that came out of the planning process were first and foremost, to improve water quality, um, to build stakeholder awareness of watershed issues, protect, manage and restore, uh, natural components of the green infrastructure network, uh, manage and mitigate flooding and assess and improve policies and regulations to protect natural resources. And with that, I'll turn it back to Logan to go over some of the projects we recommended in the plan.
Thank you. So I've got four slides. These, these tables are actually in the plan. Um, I'm not going to go into these in detail, but a couple of things I wanted to just point out is that out of the whole plan, you know, it's a pretty hefty document. These tables summarize really what is recommended to physically be done to help improve the watershed. Now, um, a couple of them, when we identify them as a critical area, these are areas that are typically projects that the city has some type of ownership over, meaning that you physically own it, the park district owns it, or it's something that you could take on a, uh, industry such as Aldi. They have a ownership on lots of these, um, where they could partner with the city to actually get things done to improve the watershed. Uh, a couple of them that are city owned, there's actually one detention basin at the fire department right off of Wilson, that is, is a project identified that it could go through a retrofit, help water quality in the area. Another one is an island. Um, I know them where they are on the creek. I forget the street names exactly, but, uh, it's kind of about reach four. I can, I can get you the exact address on that one. But, you know, all these, they, they have different recommendations to them, a rough cost estimate and kind of based on whether it's critical or not critical, we can say, hey, this should be done if you can within the next 10 years, or if it can get kind of pushed down the road a little bit further. Uh, all these projects up here on the next table, these are actual reaches along the creek. I, I keep saying reach, these are just sections of the creek that have very similar characteristics, meaning the banks are in similar shape, they have similar land ownership and, and things like that. Uh, creek itself did have many more areas that were deemed as critical. Uh, you know, erosion is an ongoing issue along portions of the stream. So just because something is called critical does not mean it must be fixed or undertaken right away. A lot of the time, we will actually lean towards calling them critical, specifically that when we apply for grants, we can say, in this document, it says it's critical. You guys approved it, let's get this done. And that actually will help later on with funding along the way. All right. But overall, you know, the project, the watershed base plan did identify about 1.2 million dollars in detention basin retrofits that could take place. Some of these are city owned, some are owned by private property owners and some are owned by, uh, commercial industries. The stream itself has a little bit higher cost associated with it. Uh, but I would like to note that a couple of these have actually already been done. Uh, I mentioned the detention basins at the headwaters of Mahoney Creek, right at Kirk Road, that has been completed. So we can check that one off the list. Uh, Michael Wild Park, that's the one that we actually received some funding from the EPA on. That one's under design, permits have been applied for and we're hoping to construct that next year. And that kind of leads us into just a summary of everything where we're at right now. So plan being approved, this means we are definitely open for funding. Everything is okay on the IEP A side. Uh, we have been using the plan to apply for grants prior to them approving it. As you saw, they did take quite a long time. So we, we assumed they approved it without a formal letter, but we have that in hand now. Got those, uh, basins built up by Kirk Road, a half a million in funding is going towards the Michael Wild Park project. And overall, really the, the point of bringing this to your attention now that we have this formal letter is to request that the city formally adopt the plan as one of your guiding documents. So with that, uh, we do have more information available on the website and, uh, you can take any questions you may have.
Want to have any questions? Dustin?
Looking through the document, I know a lot of the, um, Riparian area restoration projects involve managing, you know, managing invasive species and maybe replanting more native plantings. Um, recently, the Environmental Commission completed a very successful project along the river doing that kind of work. Would it be viable to sort of put together a volunteer effort to do at least part of this work instead of having to wait over the many decade-long period to start rolling these projects out? Maybe spur a, a volunteer effort to do some of the more accessible work in this program.
Definitely something that we could look into. Um, one of the, we've had such a great experience working, working with HR Green on this project. Um, they've done a lot to reach out to the homeowners, the property owners all along the creek and many of them. You just heard a gentleman who is very passionate about the fact that this creek runs right across his property. And so there are a lot of people with a passion and probably would love to volunteer for something like that. Andrea?
We can definitely look at the different areas and see, um, access points. Some of the things as Logan's charts indicated that they're private property. So that's a little bit, has a little complexity added to it, but definitely something we can look into.
Also wanted to point out that that first project that we were talking about on Kirk Road, I had the pleasure of attending a, uh, stormwater management conference at which Andrea and Logan were presenting that project to a whole room full of, uh, professionals as an outstanding example of, uh, watershed work.
How often will the stream quality be retested now that the plan is in place?
We currently have a volunteer from the friends of, um,
Fox River?
The Fox River, yeah, Caitlin Shield. She lives in town. She is, uh, doing monthly samples that we get tested. So we do have those results, um, so we can monitor them. And we have noticed trends throughout the seasons.
Does it monthly, year round, all year round? And what is she testing for?
Most of the, yeah, there might be a month or two that she had something come up that she missed, but we do have records for the last two or three years.
What is she testing for with the?
There's fecal coliform, BOD. You, if you want to reach out to me, I can share those with you.
And I noticed in your memo that it said that there were no policy recommendations at this point, but there is a whole section, I think of really good policy recommendations in the plan. Um, is that something, if somebody else will join me, that we could maybe bring back up? It seems like a lot of the things might be a nice, you know, ounce of prevention kind of measures that could help this plan get along further by not adding to the problem down the road.
Do we have any of that on our strategic plan? Cause I know that some of the conversation that we have to weigh here is staffing and some of our priorities and everything.
So I believe that, um, in our section on resiliency, we do, um, talk about flood mitigation and the Michael Wild project is an area where we have experienced some significant, um, flooding issues. So yes, this does go part and parcel with that area of our strategic plan.
But I think what Abby was talking about was with the policies and everything. And I know that when we asked staff to review that, there's time and planning for that. So that's why I'm asking the review of those policies. Is that something, you know, that fits within our strategic plan at this time?
Yes.
With that said, I would then join, uh, to have it, uh, added to a future agenda.
I'll join.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move into, uh, the regular agenda and we'll have , uh, resolution 2025 dash 133R, uh, to adopt the Mahoney Creek Watershed Base Plan.
Yeah. So this is exactly what we were just talking about. And it's just a formal resolution to adopt the plan that was just presented. So it makes it really easy for me because I, it's already all been explained. And I moved to pass, uh, resolution 2025 133R, adopt Mahoney Creek Watershed Base Plan, unless anybody else has any further questions.
Just a clarification. So if we adopt this plan, we can still talk about other priorities in, um, in the future.
This is going to allow us to, you know, keep on working to get grants. Free money is always good.
That way with the plan that lays that out, and then when we know that there's grant money available, or when it fits into the budget, we add that in. And that way we have a plan already. We're not grasping for straws to figure out what we want to do out there and what we're going to spend money on.
Okay. Motion by Soffa, second by Malone. Um, roll call, please.
Soffa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Baron Bach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Thank you. Barazza?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none of them.
Okay. That moves on with positive recommendation to city council. Um, up next then would be, uh, resolution 2025 129R, a downtown improvement grant for, uh, a rooted home. That would be community development. Alderman Beck?
Yes. So this is for one of our current boardwalk shop tenants, a rooted home who was going to be taking over the property at 237 West Wilson Street. Used to be Lisa's Heads or Nails, then Ease Escape, and she moved to the Tom Lee Building. So it became available. So we're excited to see one of our boardwalk shops find a new home here in Batavia. She's applied for the downtown improvement grant in an amount, um, of $7,120.13, which is 50% of project costs that include, um, replacing drywall and fixing some lighting, fixing some ceiling, patching some ceiling drywall, um, in order to get it move-in ready for her new location. Um, I had one question for you, Anthony, before I open it up. Could you explain kind of what the rules are for these types of grants? How often a, a business owner can apply? How often a property can be eligible for something to grant? Um, and those types of specifics?
Sure. Uh, thank you all the person Beck. Uh, and Scott can, uh, chime in as well. But, uh, typically with our TIF, uh, grant, uh, we have a 10-year period where if you've exhausted all of the funds for a particular, uh, grant, whether it be the facade or the downtown improvement grant, if there's money still available within that 10-year period, you could still apply. But if the monies has been exhausted after 10-year or during that 10-year period, uh, then that's kind of how we, um, delegate those grant funds. And in this case, uh, we have the funds available for, uh, the downtown improvement grant. Hopefully that answers your question.
Any questions about this project or this grant?
I think we're moving another business from the boardwalk shops into a brick and mortar.
Is the applicant here?
Yes. And I did want to just make mention of this, that, you know, this is one of the great opportunities that we have using this particular, uh, TIF resource. Uh, Michelle, she's been certainly a pleasure to work with. She, like you mentioned, uh, has her location at a boardwalk shop currently. But when we first spoke, she said, I want to be in the downtown. I want to be in Batavia. And she appreciated Batavia for so many different reasons. One of the things I can tell you is things that she's trying to do on this paper here that I've, uh, outlined in the memo, she's also going to be taking upon herself to do many other things for that property, uh, for that particular space. And obviously, as we know, uh, the historical buildings of Batavia has truly been a challenge to get businesses in and staying. Um, so I want to commend number one, Michelle for putting a dedication into bringing this building, bringing this space to something beautiful. And I believe that her opportunity of being here in Batavia is going to truly create that ecosystem that we're looking for. Um, and that will contribute to our downtown as far as business and just her whole character. We do have Michelle here who would like to share a little bit of information about her business, what she does and some of her plans here for 237 West Wilson Street where she'll be locating. So Michelle, if you'd like to come up?
Thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate being here. And Anthony spoke so succinctly. So, um, I won't take up much of your time, but I have so enjoyed being part of the boardwalk shops. I've so enjoyed, um, the welcoming that Batavia has given me. Um, this city is fantastic and it made us want to stay here. Um, as Anthony said, we are investing some of our own money as well and time and effort and, um, blood, sweat and tears. Hopefully not too many tears. Um, but we are really invested in staying in this community. And so this grant is going to help us be able to do that. Um, and what I do, we do home decor and design, we do gifts. Um, I'll be doing some workshops. What I'm really excited about is partnering with other businesses. So we've already started some of those conversations. I have some fabulous neighbors that are really excited to have us next door and can't wait for us to open. So, um, so yeah, so this money will be good, put to good use. Um, I have five kids and I know how to budget very well. And I also, um, want everyone to just feel confident in what our vision is for the space. Um, it is an old building, so it has some quirks and some things that we have to work through and we are taking that on and excited to do so. So.
Any questions?
Yeah. I was going to say, um, for those who haven't been to the boardwalk shop yet, already, uh, you guys have done a phenomenal job just transforming that small space into like a very warm and welcoming area. So I'm excited to see what you do with the full location here. I think it's going to be very nice.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for taking the gamble on Batavia and, uh, loving it like you do. We're, we're happy to have you and hope your, uh, your business thrives here. But I, I'm, as sure many may know, I'm, I'm very happy to see a, a business coming out of the boardwalk shops landing here in Batavia. So glad it's yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Um, yeah. I mean, I was going to say basically what Dustin said, if you haven't visited yet your space in the boardwalk shop, you really should, the northwest corner of the boardwalk shops. Um, and you and your husband did a gorgeous build out with what you had in that space and you've curated it so well. And so I just feel like it's going to be, I mean, I can't wait to see what you do in a, in a brick and mortar. So.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I just appreciate all the support and the love and, yeah, we hope we can give that back.
And I'll reiterate what others have said. It's really good when we have that incubator space turn into, you know, the, the brick and mortar business. And I hope you have a lot of success in there.
And I'll definitely continue to pay it forward. I get a lot of questions because I am on that corner and I love talking about my experience. I love sharing my experience. I love rooting other people on. So we're in it for that as well and just want to encourage others as well. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Bob, did you want to say something?
I was just going to ask when we can look forward to your, uh, brick and mortar store opening.
So we are hoping, um, we were hoping sometime this year. I mean, this is really going to get us, be able to get us moving more quickly. So, um, if I'm being honest, which I always am, um, probably early next year, but as soon as we can possibly do so. And we know the holiday season is here and, you know, the holidays are coming. So we want to be very realistic and very genuine about that. But, um, as soon as possible, we, we can't wait. So.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025 dash 129 dash R Downtown Improvement Grant for a rooted home.
Our motion by Beck. Second by Lehman. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're set to go.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And that'll go to, uh, council with positive recommendation. Right. Then we'll move on to item 8.2, which is ordinance 2025 065, amending the municipal code, adding title seven, chapter eight, restricted use of city property.
Let me do it?
Yep.
So ordinance 2025 dash 65 is going to create a new section in the Batavia Municipal Code to restrict city-owned property from being used for civil immigration enforcement purposes. It ensures that federal immigration actions cannot occur on city property without a warrant and proper identification, prohibits use of city data for such enforcement, and directs staff to post signage and report violations. The measure reinforces a city's commitment to transparency, community trust and safety while maintaining compliance with lawful warrants and criminal enforcement.
Alderman Malone?
Uh, great. So I'll, I'll jump in again, uh, here. I'm not going to repeat everything I shared last time, but I do believe that this is, uh, an important ordinance for our city to pass for a number of reasons. Uh, I kind of defined them in three broad categories last time. I kind of defined them in three broad categories last time. Protecting our safety, protecting the rights of our residents and the rights of the city, as well as promoting human dignity where we can. I think the memo that was available online did a good job of outlining how this aligns with our strategic plan, what we're aiming to achieve here. So I'm not going to go too in-depth on those. Just a few reasons why I think this is an important ordinance to pass is that, first off, we want to make sure that our town is a place where folks living and working can engage safely. That's our job as the older people. That's something we need to do here. And when folks can't engage with the civil services that we provide with the police departments, everyone's a little less safe. And when we don't have clearly defined rules and guidance for law enforcement, everyone's a little less safe as well. We expect our police officers to follow rules, and they do a great job. We have some of the best police officers in the entire country here. I think they show that day and night. And we want to make sure that other law enforcement agencies that come in know what the rules are. Also, this is not about immigration. It's really more about our rights, our safety, and our dignity here. We cannot change the immigration policy. We can't make immigration enforcement change how they behave. We can control our property, though, and that's very clearly allowed. That's something that we can do, and that's something that we should do. The Tenth Amendment gives us the right to not help enforce federal law unless it's written in the law. It's not. So we are allowed to say, hey, you enforce your law, but just don't use our resources, our personnel, and our property. All right. There was some discussion last time around about doesn't this replicate the Trust Act? My first response to that is, if it does, so what? Okay, it's okay to write things down twice. But second, there are some key areas where this ordinance expands on the Trust Act. First, the Trust Act primarily talks about law enforcement. Here, we're expanding it to city services. We're expanding it to city personnel. We're extending, expanding it to non-law enforcement-related parts of our city. And I think that's an important step. It also works in some enforceability mechanisms. We are able to then report activity that we find. We are able to empower our city administrators and our city staff to send that information along to folks who can hold others accountable, who can make sure that when the laws are broken and rights are violated, that there's actions taken. And when they do things right, that is also reported out, right? These are important aspects that we want to make sure we touch on. And finally, what I'll say is that it also makes an important statement. Ordinances and laws are not just the what we will do and what we won't do. It also states what we stand for and who we are when we make accessibility ordinances, asking to put in ramps for folks who need wheelchairs or are less mobile-able. That's making a statement that we want them to be part of our community. Similarly, this ordinance here is making a statement that when law enforcement occurs, it needs to be proper. It needs to be clear. We need to know when and where it's going to occur. With all that said, I am going to make a first motion to amend. I would like to amend the ordinance to add to Section 2, Paragraph 1, Part A. I'd like to add the word judicial before the word warrant. I would just like to make it very clear that we're looking for a judicial warrant. So I'd like to make that motion now that we amend the ordinance, Section 2, Paragraph 1, Part A, to add the word judicial before the word warrant.
Second, that.
Where was that again? Which?
Section 2, Paragraph 1, Part A.
Alderman Malone? Do you want to put just judicial at the beginning of that or in the second sentence, too, where it also says warrant?
Thank you, yes, I would like to amend my amend. Yeah, correct. I think in both instances where the word warrant appears, change that to judicial warrant in both instances.
Second, that.
We have a motion and a second discussion on that before I call the vote on that. Okay, at this point then we'll call vote on the amendment for adding judicial in front of warrant in Section 2, Item A. Roll call, please.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
No.
Sulfah.
No.
Baron.
No.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lomen.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Baron Bach.
Aye.
Anderson.
No.
White.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
No.
Beck.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Nine, yes, five, no.
That passes. Further discussion on this as it is? Alderman.
So since our discussion last week and getting our first read of this ordinance last Wednesday, I've been really paying attention to what's been going on in our surrounding communities and also in Kane County. I want to thank our neighboring communities that have had the discussions and the debates prior to us regarding what their policy or whether they're going to do a resolution or ordinance. A lot of these conversations have been very thoughtful and empowering during a powerless time because many of us are sitting here, probably all of us, everybody in the room is feeling very powerless. Today, Kane County passed a resolution, and there'll be further discussion about an ordinance in the upcoming weeks regarding their properties. I know that our neighbors in Aurora are discussing an ordinance, and they'll be looking to pass that on Wednesday, November 12. But the one that really stands out is the City of Elgin, who passed a really comprehensive resolution during their Cow Meeting on November 5. And the reason why I bring up Aurora and Elgin is these are neighbors that are actually really fighting the fight right now. They're the ones that are having to live with this on a day-to-day basis. One thing that, I asked our state's attorney, Moser, to be here this evening because she gave a really great presentation because the one thing that stuck out to me was an ordinance versus a resolution. Many of our neighboring communities have passed resolutions. And so to me, I was like, okay, which one is going to stand out? And Elgin went into great detail and answered a lot of that. And I'd like, if State's Attorney Moser would come up and kind of explain the difference between the two. Because for me, if we're going to pass something, I need something that's going to stick for our neighbors and to protect them and to protect the city. And I think that what we have down right now, I am not comfortable with. And I don't feel like it's going to stick and help our neighbors. So if you could share that information that you shared with Elgin, it'll probably be my third time, but.
I can't believe anybody wants to hear me three times, let alone once. So what I shared with them, and to start off with the original question, is what's the big difference between an ordinance and a resolution? Where an ordinance is something that is enforceable. It's something that you have some teeth behind it. Whereas a resolution is what the City of Batavia would like to see. And so each municipality that I've looked at so far has looked at it differently to see what they would prefer, if they want something enforceable versus saying this is what the City of Batavia stands for. The issue that we're having in every single one of these communities is the actual enforceability of it because federal law cannot be governed by state law, much in the same way that state law cannot be governed by federal law. It's the supremacy clause of our Constitution. And that's where everybody has been very frustrated in either coming up with a resolution or an ordinance because it's that ultimate enforceability with it. And so part of what I ended up presenting to the Elgin City Council, which is the reason why I'm here today, is really what our laws say. And I want to just briefly talk about, because I think you all understand, the Trust Acts. The Trust Act is state law, and it requires what our local law enforcement can and cannot do. So they cannot enforce federal immigration policies. They cannot detain or continue to detain a person on their immigration detainer or civil immigration warrant. They cannot even investigate or inquire about a person's immigration status. That is Illinois law. They cannot do that. And unless they're presented with a valid criminal warrant, local law enforcement cannot participate, support, or assist in any capacity, give any access to a person to ICE, transfer any person into ICE custody, allow ICE to use their facilities, give access to data, respond to requests for information, or give them anything that wouldn't be readily accessible to the general public. Now, I really want this to be known that that is unless presented with a valid criminal warrant. If a valid criminal warrant is presented to local law enforcement, then local law enforcement can, in fact, turn the individual over to ICE because they're being presented with that warrant. And so that's the big difference between the valid criminal warrant and the civil immigration enforcement that we've been seeing that does not have a warrant that's attached to it. If there's any type of a violation, it's the Attorney General's Office that investigates it, and they have a whole Civil Rights Division that discusses this. But what local law enforcement can't do is they cannot obstruct the lawful immigration enforcement by the federal government. And so that's why I've been looking at a lot of these. I'm going to be looking at Kane County's to see what we're going to do because we cannot put any of our officers in the position of obstructing federal immigration enforcement when it is lawful. And that's with or without a criminal warrant because even if it's civil, and while we may disagree or people may disagree with it, it's still lawful. Our officers could be arrested for obstruction of a federal law enforcement officer if they're put in the position of stopping it, interfering with it, or doing something of that nature. Now, recently, our Illinois Legislature passed Senate Bill 1312. It had five different immigration bills within it that is going to further restrict where federal civil enforcement can happen or even the execution of certain warrants. So, for example, it's going to be 1,000 feet within a courthouse. And so if a person is coming to or from a court proceeding, and they're within that 1,000 feet, local law or federal law enforcement cannot execute their civil immigration enforcement through that. There's protections now for hospitals, schools, and daycares as a result of all of that. And so then I'm here, obviously, to talk to you about any of that, to give you, you have wonderful legal counsel who I had the opportunity to speak with today in regards to it. My one caution to you is because of this new legislation, now there is a state remedy for civil action against those who are doing federal civil immigration enforcement where a person can be sued through state court. Now, the obvious intention of that is if there are federal agents who are violating our state law now, that they could potentially be sued. But what you have to watch out for when creating an ordinance that's enforceable is whether or not we're setting up our local law enforcement, almost telling them to interfere with federal immigration enforcement, setting them up for then either obstructing the police or the federal immigration officers or setting them up for local civil suits. And so that's the one thing that we've been looking at. And what I'm going to look at in terms of our Kane County, if we're going to do an ordinance or a resolution, just to make sure that we're not setting our officers up for failure when the intent is to try to stop these immigration practices that go beyond what is allowed in both federal law and then frankly, what should be happening in state law. So I'm here for any questions that you may have.
To go off of that, I think at one point, one of the questions that was asked of you is, can we stop them from coming on our property?
So you can stop them for certain things, so the staging, because that is basically commandeering or taking over the property that they don't have the authority to be on. And so you can restrict anybody from coming on the property for certain reasons. So, for example, if you have protesters, protesters can be told to be in a certain area as long as whatever they're protesting, what you're regulating is content neutral. You can do the same thing because they're commandeering your property by setting up for staging. I do not believe that municipalities, though, or even the county, could stop people from lawful immigration enforcement. And so that's the difference. You can tell them you can't set up, you can't plan here, but if they're coming in either to execute a warrant or even to do civil immigration enforcement, which is lawful, and I keep saying lawful because that's the first step that you have to have. I don't know that you can regulate that because the supremacy clause would come in to say that we're allowed to do this, you can't regulate our ability to do it. It would be the same thing that I would say for the Batavia Police. There's no difference between having a warrant and having probable cause to make an arrest. And if you're going to say that they can't come in without a warrant, well, that would be the same thing as telling the local police officers, well, you have probable cause for an arrest for a person for, let's say, domestic battery. You can't come here to arrest it because you don't have a warrant. So that's the problem that you would have in terms of enforcing what they can and cannot do.
So upon hearing this, this actually makes me feel much more comfortable with our ordinance as written. It covers all the bases that you've just shared with us. We are not asking our police officers to stop lawful immigration enforcement. I think we've been pretty clear on that. You also highlighted very effectively that what we're doing is we're saying you can't stage on our property. I think we were very clear in our ordinance on that as well. I think the only sort of small area is perhaps the amendment I just made, judicial warrant. We then also add the language or probable cause. Otherwise, I don't see anything here that our ordinance does that you've raised an alarm on. You know, the phrase that I'm hanging on is you opened up with, and what I heard was there, that an ordinance is enforceable. A resolution is not. And enforceability is really what we want, right? I think enforceability is the perk here. It's what we're aiming to get. The Senate Bill 1312, you know, that will be a very nice addition. I'm pleased that the state is taking further action here. Again, there is no harm in having redundancy at the municipal level as well as at the state level. And we also get to direct our own property the way we choose. We are the City of Batavia. The state of Illinois is not the City of Batavia. So we can also limit, you know, our parking lots at the, you know, utility buildings and so on and so forth. So once again, I mean, I thank you. That really helped open my eyes. I think it's similar to what our city attorney had shared with us, that much of our ordinance is very well within sort of the established understanding of both the supremacy clause as well as other aspects. Are you able to kind of explain some of the different types of preemption? I know that one of the primary concerns is our object preemption, right, where we can't sort of stand in the way, right? You can't have your police officers tackle somebody, tackle an ICE agent as they're attempting to enforce an immigration warrant. However, that doesn't mean they have to assist. Is that correct?
Well, they cannot assist. Like even if a warrant is presented and the federal agents take him into custody, there's nothing that our local law enforcement needs to do. But if they're attempting to take somebody in custody and that person is physically resisting, well, that's now a violation of our state law, well, that's now a violation of our state law, and it's assisting in terms of federal criminal warrant, so the officers could participate with that. We had a situation in the county where a person had a federal criminal warrant, and the deputy assisted in translating the warrant. And that was perfectly allowed under the Act because there was a warrant that was a part of it. So the one thing that I would caution that I looked at within Section 2 is you correctly put it out that when you say a warrant, and maybe you should add in, I think it has to be a warrant and civil immigration because it's lawful. It's lawful civil immigration enforcement. And so that's the issue that we have, is that if you're telling them now that they cannot do something they lawfully can, I think that may be, now, keep in mind, this is for the federal government to come in and to say that it's unconstitutional.
Well, now, you had just shared with us, though, that under anti-commandeering, we don't.
Right.
You said only with a criminal warrant. Now you're saying add civil warrants in there?
It's a difference between commandeering. So the first part of your ordinance talks about that they can't use it as a staging area to prep to do this. What if a person sees an individual and goes to enforce it? That's a difference between commandeering and executing what they lawfully are able to do under federal law.
Yeah, and help me out here, where in our, you said Section 2 is where?
Section 2, 1A.
1A.
Because it says a warrant shall be presented. My concern is that if they're there to do, to enforce civil immigration, they are able to do that, and that could be, could be, I want you to keep in mind, this is for the federal government to argue, not the county state's attorney. It could be a violation of the supremacy clause because we're telling them they can't enforce their laws.
And has this been tested?
No, not at all.
No, not at all.
No. But I don't want the city of Batavia or the county of Kane to be the testing part. What I want is for you to have a, very true. If you guys want to, good luck, Roman.
Well, that's fine. I mean, we can have the tax money conversation, and we can have the rights conversation, and I think it's fair to, it's fair to have that. I think it's okay for us to be nervous and to be worried about the ones who are on the hook for it as well, but that's not at no cost. Okay? So I, you know, I've been speaking with a lot of attorneys as well. I work in the Legalists. We've met many times, you know. And there's different opinions out there as well, you know, right? And I think the important thing to keep in mind is that this hasn't been tested. We don't really know. And so we need to ask ourselves, are we willing to kind of step up and see what it's like or not? With a very small, very small, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, very small likelihood that we would be the test case. But yeah, I mean, that's the question we're having. So I kind of went off on attention. Thank you so much, by the way.
I could continue on with some of my thought process here. Some of else what makes me nervous in this is we're talking about, we're going to ask people to unmask. And I don't feel like that's something that we can do because then we are trying to control the federal government where we don't really have control over that. And so there's many parts of this that I'm not comfortable with because I want to align with our neighbors and what they are doing. An ordinance, if this gets tested, and we are found, like any part of it is to be out of, going against the federal government, then it goes away. So if we put up signs, the signs go down. And I just am not sure that that is the right way to go. I think the resolution would be the way to go because those are parts, yes, it can be tested, but we're not trying to put ourselves, we're trying to hold people accountable when we can't hold people really accountable. For me, it's about the documentation and helping our neighbors that way, and getting that information up to the Illinois Commission that was created by the state government. And that is part of the State Bill 1312 Act.
It's actually part of the executive order that the governor put out.
Yeah.
This creation of the commission.
To where we have documentation, and that's where I see our police officers doing their part. Because if they get a call and they go out, they're not interacting with the federal govern, or with the federal agents. They're there to do the documentation through their webcams. And then that is what can be saved, and that documentation, if it needs to go either through the state's attorney or up to the, up to the state. For me, that is the part that we're going to play, and to make our neighbors safer. Because we're not going to stop it. We can't stop it. But what we can do is we can help them and provide them that documentation.
I just wanted to make the clarification that it isn't going to be our officers who would go out and do the enforcement under this circumstance. The reports come to my office, and I would be the ones who would approach whatever federal agency has commandeered city property and ask them to leave. And then in the event that they don't.
But what if we're getting multiple calls at multiple times, Laura? I mean, we have to think of the practicality of this, and who's going to be out there taking the calls? It's, the calls are going to come in through 911. And respectfully, as a city administrator, I don't want to put that on you. That, you should be the one that's collecting the data and then deciding on where it goes, but not the one actually going out there and collecting the data. We've got our police officers that have webcams that can easily videotape anything that could be going on. And that could be asking them, do you have a federal, a criminal warrant, criminal immigration warrant? And that is where you're getting that data to build that case, to support that.
The problem with that is that the areas of this whole situation that are fraught with peril are the interactions between our police force and federal law enforcement, that there are these nuances where making a mistake in that regard is going to be the violation of the supremacy clause, or is, so that's why having it be done through an administrative agency removes that possibility. And, you know, we don't have that much city property available, I don't think, that there will be staging in multiple areas. Also, we are adjacent to federal, how many acres at Fermilab? That would seem to offer a much easier place for an operation to be staged.
But now that the state has added daycares and schools and courthouses to that, you could get a call of somebody saying, or the police could get a call saying, hey, we've got federal agents here. Is that then when we get a call on 911 to where they call you and say, hey, Laura, now you gotta go out to the school and collect that documentation, that data?
I'm not aware that, is the Beavens Act require local law enforcement to enforce that law against the federal government? It's a state law. I would think it would be a state police matter.
So it is, it is a state law, but a lot of it talks about documentation, too. I see situations where our local law enforcement will come out to be able to, at a minimum, provide that documentation. In the creation of this, it was supposed to obviously limit the federal immigration enforcement, but the remedy for it is a civil lawsuit. But you're going to get 911 calls, and the police are going to respond to it.
I just, hold on a second, Kevin. I would like to make a statement here. And what you and Alderman Baron were just talking about, in our ordinance, it says that our city employees will be the one to initiate that. And I'm not sure that I feel comfortable asking a city employee to step into the middle of that and say, okay, Mr. Federal Agent, you have to wait here because I have to call my city administrator so that they can come out here and tell you why you can't come on our property, and show you this piece of paper, so that that can happen. I think every step that we've taken here is with very good intention, but in listening to what I watched on your, you know, comments up at Elgin, and what I have constantly been reading is, I think at this point, we need to rely on the Trust Act, which take care, which takes care of two of the three bullet points that we have here. And what we want to have is an ordinance. And the only thing that's different is the removal of the face mask and showing a badge, which if it was the FBI coming in to investigate a crime, we would never ask them to take their mask off. If we had somebody undercover trying to initiate a stop, other than having the police on their back, they don't have their badge out until they're asked for it. So I mean, I don't agree with the way it's happening right now in almost every place I've seen it in the news or that I'm aware of. But I think we have to be really careful how we move this forward. And if the state has just put out another law, I think we need to review that and see how much of that takes care of what we want to have here before we start to duplicate, replicate, or anything else. Because I don't feel comfortable telling our rank-and-file employees that if somebody shows up at Public Works, they have to be the one to go out and confront them and then tell.
It's not what it says. They don't confront. It's, I'm the only one who confronts.
Yeah. Okay, then how do we stop them on the property? They're already on the property then by the time you get there.
When, I'll give the example of Broadview, right? So they went there, they said, take the fence down. They didn't take the fence down. And so they worked with their city attorney to file an action in federal court, and the result was the federal court siding with the city, and the ICE took the fence down.
And they weren't on private property, though.
It was, it was blocking roads.
Well, yeah, the street was, was public property. Okay. I'll go to Alderman Farrenbach.
Thank you for showing up.
Yes.
Thank you for being here. The one thing I'm taking away from this is that there's still stuff in motion. We're still figuring this out. This is all new, it's all new ground. It's a statement of 2025 that the lowest people on the political totem pole are, have to address this issue, right? But the point is, everyone's still figuring it out, right? The one, so when we first had this conversation, we didn't have an ordinance in front of us, okay? And then we got the ordinance, and it's a very short ordinance. For what it is, it's a pretty short ordinance. We've had bigger ordinances over much more trivial stuff, right? And one thing that I think gets lost in translation when we talk about what this encovers, it just covers city property. It doesn't cover the parks, doesn't cover the schools, doesn't cover the library, you know, doesn't cover Fermilab, which is 6,800 acres right next to us. More importantly, that area right behind Deers Guard Barber Shop. City doesn't own that whole acre and a half of parking lots. City doesn't own that either, right? So they can, they can set up all they want right in the middle of downtown. So my, my ask would be, if you wouldn't have shown up, by chance by you, when I saw you sit down, I, my heart skipped a beat. I'm like, cool, I know what you're going to, and to be fair, it's been a crazy week in Batavia, so I didn't know why you were here.
In all fairness, I caused PTSD in a lot of people in the city.
Yeah. So I would like to propose that, you know, if we have to wait for stuff to shake out, let's, let's let it shake out, and then we can come back and, you know, see what's the best approach.
That's kind of what I feel, because I feel like that if this is just changed into state law, and we can apply that to the properties we have here, and it's statewide, so everybody has the same thing, that makes a lot more sense.
And maybe it'll cover the lot library, maybe it'll cover the schools, maybe it'll cover all this stuff, you know?
And then every district that is in the state wouldn't have to do this.
So this goes back to when I was originally talking about when this all came up, and I wasn't received well, but the Illinois Trust Act is in place, and we follow the Illinois Trust Act. I understand concerns about Batavia making a statement. I would, we've been talking about our neighbors to the north and south. I would look at the St. Charles website, city of St. Charles. They have a very nice statement about what the city of St. Charles follows. I mean, I'm just going to read you a paragraph because I think this kind of covers a lot of stuff. It says, "Federal Immigration Operations in Illinois Trust Act: Information for Residents." And the first headline, "Our Commitment to the Community. We have received numerous inquiries from the St. Charles community about reports of federal immigration operations in the Chicago area. First and foremost, the safety and security of our residents is our top priority. We are committed to working together with residents, community groups, and partners to ensure that everyone feels safe, supported, and heard in St. Charles." And it goes on for the St. Charles Police Department policy. "The St. Charles Police Department fully complies with the Illinois Trust Act, which limits cooperation between local law enforcement and federal immigration authorities, and prohibits local police from detaining individuals based on immigration holds or ICE detainers without a judicial warrant, aiming to protect immigrant communities and uphold due process." It says, "Our officers do not conduct immigration-related investigations. Our officers do not participate in immigration-related arrests. The Police Department does not receive advance notice of federal immigration operations. We remain focused on protecting all residents and providing services equally to everyone, regardless of immigration status." And then it goes on, it lists key trust immigration, key trust act immigration-related facts. "The Act prevents local officers from inquiring about an individual's immigration status during routine interactions such as traffic stops. No person will be denied police services or any other benefit based on their immigration status. The local police will not stop, search, or arrest any person on their perceived immigration status. No witness, victim, or other person reporting the crime will be questioned regarding their immigration status. The police will not proactively notify ICE of the arrest of an undocumented person absent a federal criminal warrant or a federal judicial determination of probable cause. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact the Police Department." That's an outline of what I think we can put on the website, which is where people actually would probably go, you know, and in this day and age, you're going to go to the city of Batavia website to look for something. Have that as, we can have that as a, as a marked page up at the top of the website. I'm sure it's easy to put like a little flag where you can click on it. And you can add in additional things about specific citations to the Trust Act like I was reading from before, so that everything will be laid out exactly with what we are complying with as the city of Batavia, yet also focusing on the commitment to the community and what, you know, the Police Department's allowed to do, not allowed to do. And I think that covers everything that needs to be covered at this point in time. And, you know, just as Alderman Farrenbach just was talking about, maybe we'll let everything shake out a little bit, see what goes on with these state laws. I think this, I think that Ms. Moser would agree that this is a, a safe option that sets forth exactly what the city complies with, would be fully within the law, and is, would be, led back to a good resource for residents to know what's going on.
That's correct.
So my proposal would be that we table this particular ordinance, and we have the city draft up something similar to what St. Charles did, which I think is very nicely done, and really is, it provides a lot of good information, and we can even expand on it to even include some more trust, Trust Act facts. And put that as a flagged page on our website so that the citizens of Batavia can see exactly what our position is in terms of what we must follow and what we're doing in terms of upholding due process and everything that the Trust Act allows. So I'm making a motion to table the ordinance, and we have a statement put onto the Batavia website, similar to what St. Charles has.
Okay. We have a second? Okay. Okay. Excuse me, we are having a discussion within the council. When we are done with that, we will take public comment. I do have a sheet here with names on it. So let us finish our discussion. And if you make an outburst, you will be asked to leave the room. And if I have to, we'll clear that room so that we can have our discussion. Alderman Lehman?
Can I comment on this before we vote on tabling? Yeah?
A debate stage and rules.
Okay, thank you.
We can, we can discuss it.
Okay. So as Kevin kind of opened up earlier with the current draft ordinance, I don't see anything in there. I just see a little bit of an expansion of the Trust Act, and I don't see anything in there that is overly concerning for the city. I think some primary differences, the Trust Act applies to law enforcement agencies only, and our ordinance opens it up to, expands it to city departments and property. And I think that's important. And, you know, we had at the October 20 meeting, we heard from many, many from our Batavia community, people who all stated that they lived in our wards. These are community members, and they shared their stories, their family stories, personal stories of their friends, coworkers, neighbors, students. And I just want to reflect again, as we're having this discussion, that as elected officials, it's important for us to listen to these voices in our community. And sometimes their stories and their experiences differ from our own, which is why it's so important to listen to them, and listen to their experiences. As Alderperson Baron mentioned, that there have been a lot of surrounding communities that have recently passed ordinances and resolutions, both, and some of those resolutions have added on to ordinances that they already have in place. I'm not going to even pretend that I've had an opportunity to look into and read all the recent things that have happened in all the other communities, but if I understand correctly, Evanston already had, already has a welcoming ordinance that they had in place that already outlawed the use of city facilities by immigration agents, and their recent resolution just added, it just built on that ordinance that they already had in place. So there has been a lot of neighboring communities that have used their legal counsel, and they have moved forward with some of these ordinances, even before current, the past months. We, as a council and as a city, we need to be just as concerned for our residents as we are for our city employees. I'm hearing a lot today about talking about our, our city staff, but we need to remember we're here representing our community, our residents, our constituents. That needs to, we need, that's what we are discussing today. So in my mind, this ordinance builds on and expands the principles of the Illinois Trust Act, again, to all of our city operations, and it reinforces that we are looking for transparency, accountability, and community trust. And I know that sometimes it's important to have action even when it feels futile and, or when we have questions, or we don't know how it's going to play out, but that's been the history of Batavia, and I hope that's going to be our future also.
Anderson?
So I guess I still have a question on how enforceable this is. Last week, that was one of my big things before we could read the ordinance, is it needs to be impactful and enforceable. So Laura, can you talk me through what happens if, once you get a phone call? What are you going to do?
Let's say that they are in the west parking lot, and they seem to be setting up and organizing for going out and doing something. I mean, that is our parking lot being commandeered for preparations for an operation. And so I would go out, ask who is in charge of there, ask what their purpose was in being there, and then let them know if we have an ordinance, then that's something that's enforceable. What the state's attorney was saying is a resolution does not give me anything that's enforceable. It's more like a policy statement, like this is what we would like to see. So if we want to have any type of enforcement mechanism, then we would need to go with an ordinance. However, that's going to be the thing that, once you conduct that enforcement... However, that's going to be the thing that, um, once you conduct that enforcement, is potentially going to lead to that being challenged. So you're less likely to have a challenge if you have a resolution, but the resolution doesn't have the same teeth that an ordinance has. So let's say I go out and I say, "Please leave because we have this ordinance that prohibits you from being here." Then they say, "No." Then I make a call to, uh, the city attorney to say, you know, "What are our options here?" And one of those could be judicial, to file an action, to ask them to be removed.
So what if they respond with, "We're doing civil immigration enforcement"?
Even if they're doing, uh, civil immigration enforcement, they still don't have a right to commandeer our property. So when, I believe that when the state's attorney was talking about, they have a right to do civil immigration enforcement, that would mean that they're stopping a person and they're saying, "We now have the right to detain you." That's different than saying, "Okay, all 12 of our officers in this area, I want you to drive to the City of Batavia's Government Center. We're going to set up in the west parking lot and we're going to talk about how we're going to go out and do these enforcement actions." So that's the difference.
So then, just playing this out, we go, we go do file some injunction, who's enforcing that?
Uh, federal government, we'd have to, uh, pursue it in the federal court because that's who has jurisdiction over them, I, I would think.
I think you'd have to start in the state courts.
Start at a state court?
Yes. And what happens from there, I don't practice federal law for a very good reason, um, but the worry that we always have is that when you're doing something against the federal government on the state level, there are statutes that say that they can come in and ask to remove it to federal court. And then when it gets removed to federal court, the likelihood of that continuing is not great.
Right.
So we would be the ones funding this, correct? Okay. So, I, I would think I would echo Alderman Soffa's comments. This is something that we need to kind of hang tight and see what happens. There are so many questions about this, to put it into an ordinance, to me, it's, the, we don't even know what the next steps are because no one's tested it and I don't think Batavia should be the one testing it. We don't have the money to do it at this point. How much money have we taken in the past five years in federal funding? Like millions of dollars?
Probably approaches $10 million.
We're going to be putting that at risk too, for something that we don't even know if we can enforce, so.
I'm just a little concerned about saying that we can't enforce a resolution because we could tell them, "We have a resolution that states you can't be on our property." And if they're like, "No, we're not going to get off," then they're commandeering on our property and we should be able to have some sort of action that we can take because we have stated this is our property and if we have signs up that say, and that's what Elgin did, and kudos to them, they put a QR code where it translated into other, um, into other, um, languages. I think we, we still have the ability to, you know, do a little bit of enforcement with the resolution through this. But it's not, it's not as hard and harsh as a ordinance where.
Since Elgin resides in King County, what's your thought on that?
So I was at the Elgin meeting because I, while I review these things, I can't give legal advice to the individual departments, but one of the things that they asked me about is if I felt like it was unconstitutional and I felt like it was constitutional. I did not think they violated the supremacy clause. I think they were, um, enforcing the non-commandeering because we're able to do that and that's something that they can interfere with our supremacy portion of that. I think what Elgin wrote was enforceable. I think it could lead towards a potential actual suit that could be successful if the federal government chooses to violate it.
Alderman Lehman?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of tabling this. Uh, I think this is a urgent situation. I think, uh, this is quite frankly, a hair-on-fire moment, uh, for, for our society. Uh, let's be real, uh, an ordinance is a law. It's something that we say is unacceptable, cannot happen here. A resolution is a desire. I think we need to go with a law that says, "We are not accepting that." Now, I know this, there's an administration right now that's led by a convicted criminal. It's the 33 counts, the felony's convicted, um, they let out 1,500 violent offenders that we saw with our own eyes. We need to have laws that say, "We don't accept unlawful behavior in Batavia." And to put out a resolution and say, "We don't desire that, we have a desire that you not do this here," is a whole lot different than us taking a position and saying, "This is illegal in Batavia, according to our laws here in Batavia."
Respectfully, I'd love to follow what our neighbors in Elgin are fighting on a day-to-day basis.
But I wasn't finished yet. Alderman Barron. Alderman Barron. So, going with an ordinance, uh, we heard loud and clear from our, our constituents that they want something done about this. Now, yes, there is questions about whether we can enforce it. When we have a, an ordinance in place that requires certain actions to happen, we're going on record. We're, we're pushing, we're, we're making sure that it, that we're watching, that eventually those that continue to violate our laws will be held accountable. It might not happen today, but if we just sit back and say, "Well, we can't pass laws because, uh, we're scared of, uh, we might cost us some money or something," or, that's not acceptable. That's, you know, our, we have fellow citizens whose constitutional rights are being violated. We have, uh, fellow residents who, uh, are doing it the right way that are being detained. That's not acceptable. And it's happening because people are standing back and letting it happen. That's, and I'm, for me, I will not stand back and watch this happen. I will not stand back and watch the lawlessness happen and us be scared to do something about it. So I, I am not in favor of tabling this. I think we should move forward with an ordinance. Uh, I like the ordinance as written. Uh, I think adding, possibly adding, uh, the, uh, civil, uh, portion to the warrant, um, lawful's.
Full civil immigration enforcement. You're welcome.
Thank you. So would, uh, I would like to amend the, uh, ordinance to include that along with judicial warrant.
Well, we first, we first have a motion pending, we're discussing that before we move further, so. Alderman Brazza, did you want to say something?
Um, okay. And I know we've gone over this a bunch of times here, but I'm really struggling to get a sense of clarity on this, um, the difference between the resolution and the ordinance, because the way.
A little closer to the mic.
The way it is written, um, they are, it does appear to be described as though there are enforcement aspects of it, with ICE being on city property and with them being able to then pursue that in a court if there, it was on their property. Is that?
That's correct. And they, they also do have a provision of it where law enforcement will be there just to be recording with body cameras, because that's the best evidence that they have out there. But ultimately, the enforcement would go through their city administrator also to either report it to the Accountability Act or potentially file a civil action against the federal immigration enforcement. So there is an enforcement.
That's not a desire. Those are actionable steps that they can absolutely take under the law in the court system and they have officers recording events as they're happening.
Correct.
Alderman Malone?
So it's the same as an ordinance then?
So it's such a nuance.
So have it in ordinance?
Correct. When you have a nuance that sometimes police enforce, that's a lot different. So when you have a DUI ordinance out here, our police can come and arrest. What you're doing with this ordinance is you're having the city administrator basically enforce it, which is going to go towards the same piece of that. It's how you actually, and what's the content of an ordinance and a resolution. In my opinion, what Elgin is doing would be just as enforceable if you put in an ordinance, frankly. So I, to me, didn't see an issue between the resolution and the ordinance.
Thank you. So, um, I, I think we're, we're quibbling over whether it's an ordinance or a resolution. We have it drafted as an ordinance and so therefore, let's move forward with it as an ordinance. I think that was pretty clear here. Um, you know, the, the arguments for tabling today appear to be, "It might cost us some money. Things are up in the air and we should wait to see how it all falls out." Uh, and there could be, uh, some risk here, right? Enforcement-wise, what we do is we sue them, right? Like, that's what all this says. We're going to collect that or we're going to go to court and we're going to sue them. That's the enforcement mechanism, right? If they're, I want to be very clear to anybody watching at home, everybody in the audience, if ICE stages in our parking lot, our ordinance doesn't say, uh, that Chief Blowers should show up with his dudes and make them go away, right? I'm sorry, that's just not how it's going to work. They're going to get, they're going to do what they do because that's how force and enforcement work. What it does do is it opens the door for us to hold them accountable. We can then say, "We had this ordinance, your responsibility is to know local law and you ignored local law. We are now going to pursue you through the courts to make sure you follow local law." Um, how you can be against that, I don't know. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll hear, right? Now, it could cost money to do that, but guess what? We spend money to enforce all sorts of things. And if we aren't willing to spend money to enforce the safety and rights of our citizens, what are we going to spend money on? We're also protecting the city's rights. In order for our rights to have weight as a city, as a unit of government, we have to enforce them. Okay? And that's going to take some cash and that's going to take some time. I think the odds of that are pretty low. I don't think ICE is going to target us. I don't think they're going to show up, but I'll concede the point that we may have to, but that's what you have to do sometimes. Sometimes you have to do that, right? Um, and the last thing I'm going to say is that, you know, uh, an exact quote I heard was, "We should go with the safe option." There's nothing safe about this, right? I get it. It makes us squirmy, it makes it hard. Uh, it's not something that's going to be easy for us to do and we are asking a lot of our city staff and our city employees, um, but I know them to be people of integrity. I know them to be people who can do this. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. And when we find ourselves in this situation, I trust that our city staff can handle this, document what happens, report it to our city administrator, who will then take the appropriate legal action after the guys with guns have gone away. All right? Um, now, uh, the last thing I'm going to say, uh, on the current motion at hand, let's not table it, let's vote up, let's vote down. If we vote no, we can just bring it back up. That's the same as tabling it. If we vote yes, uh, then we can, we can have it passed. So I think for the tabling motion, that should be a very clear no. Instead, if you want to wait, vote on the actual ordinance itself. Don't table it, don't push it off, vote on it today.
Lancy?
Yeah, so, I think we made it very clear, our only enforceability here is lawsuits, correct? What results from lawsuit? What's going to result from that lawsuit? Money?
A court order, um, which then the federal government can either appeal.
It's a long, drawn-out process with very unclear end. And I think everyone who's been through any type of court proceedings can understand the complexity that that could go into. And that is a rabbit hole that the City of Batavia does not want to go down. We are not protecting anyone by doing this. If anything, we are creating a false sense of security as we put a giant spotlight on us with the federal government. To me, it is just mind-boggling. Like, we, this is a virtue signal pat on the back that everyone has admitted. Unenforceable, unimpactful, yes, I understand there's a ton of emotion around this topic. We're not the right deists to discuss it. We're not the right place to enforce it. It's unfortunate. We need to do, there's other things in our political system that, that drive this. There, there seems to be no teeth anywhere, even if we go down the path. And, and let's be honest, let's call the rest of the, you know, all the counties that did this, the City of Chicago, you would be seeing the City of Chicago do anything they possibly could right now to get in the way of ICE short of obstruction. And I'm sure they're doing it. You know what they're not, you know what you're not seeing? Any, anyone being any quote-unquote happier or feeling any safer. It's not happening. Why? Because they're sitting back knowing exactly what the supremacy clause says and going, "Well, we go down this path, we're, we're not sure where this ends and we might not win this and what happens then?" Yeah, you start look, yes, it does have to do with money. We look at the pocketbook, we go, "We don't have the money to go fight this. This fight has to be had elsewhere." So I, I, I urge everyone to understand that we're not creating safety. We are, we are responding to an emotional response to a federal, to federal immigration law and enforcement of that law. Let's not forget, there, there are laws, our laws in the books, there is an agency charged with that and they are out doing that. Now, whether you want to agree with the administration or not on the federal level and how they're doing it and how that goes, but, but that's a political discussion that I, I don't want to have at this table. We have large topics of discussion to happen about intimately the City of Batavia. I don't even believe our illegal immigrant population's very high here. I would say that the criminal illegal population here is a lot lower than that. So if, if what we are protecting against is people who are scared because they're watching certain news outlets or, or seeing things on TV, let's all call a spade a spade. The media is brutal right now, on any side of any aisle of whatever you're looking at. It is not a good place to go get information. Data is a good place to go and get information. I've heard very little data across the, the whole topic of discussion and much more of a, "We need to do this because we had 37 constituents show up and tell us we had to do it." We need to think as the leaders of this community, what this does ultimately? What do we do for these people ultimately? Yes, we're here to create safety and, and ensure that safety. In this scenario, we don't, we don't come to play here. This is, we don't have a leg to stand on in this fight. I, if we're going to do anything, a, a resolution is, is one thing. I think you put an ordinance on the books, you open up a, a, a bad potential. And I don't think we need to be this catalyst, okay? For those that, that want to say, you know, "We can be the agent of change" or whatever, you already got Evanston, you already got the county, the Lake County, you already got other counties, you got the City of Chicago. These are much larger entities that are the tip of the spear that we can watch how this plays out live, right? And we're not seeing the people who have passed certain things like this have any favorable effect. I mean, truly. And if it's in someone's emotions that it does have an effect, okay, that's okay, but we're not here to create emotional stability for people. That's, that's not what we're here to do. So I just want everyone to stay on track. If we do want to make people feel safe and be safe, we do things that actually do that. We don't virtue signal and, and create these, uh, basically pie-in-the-sky things that we're, we're going to do the same exact thing after we pass, if we pass an ordinance or a resolution that we would do on any other day, because we do have top-notch people on our city staff and our city does care about our residents. There would be legal action taken, I'm sure, if we could and there was oversteppment of, of any law that, that, you know, we could utilize our laws. So I'll leave it at that, but I, I do truly think it creates a false sense of security, if anything. It's a giant spotlight.
Alderman?
Thank you for coming again. Next time we have a situation, we invite her first. Okay. Um, I think we should do something. What I need to know is, the other stuff that's in flight, when is that going to get, like, so we talked about the proposal at the state level, when, when is that conversation wrapping up? When are things happening there?
So it's passed the House and the Senate. I don't know when it's going to be signed by the governor. I do know that there's somebody in this room who's much more knowledgeable about that than I am, uh, State Representative Hernandez, she may have a better idea of when it's going to be signed by the governor.
Jamie, real quick?
Yes.
Is that 1312, you said, was the bill?
13.
House bill.
House bill.
House bill.
1312. I can send everybody something about that tomorrow.
That would be great, so that we have that to, to see what that is.
Yes, House bill, 1312. Thank you.
Of course. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Barbara Hernandez, I'm the state representative in the 50th District. I cover areas of rural North Rowan, Batavia, some parts of Batavia at least. But to answer that question, we are not sure yet. We have been still, um, talking with the governor to see when exactly he's going to be doing the bill signing. But it will be a public matter, hopefully by the end of this month, we hope.
It's, uh, she has 60 days to sign and if not, it automatically becomes law at the end of 60 days, even if he hasn't signed, I think.
Correct. Correct. Just before Alder Person Lowman goes, um, just to go to Alder Person Lancy, what you said, you know, where this doesn't do anything, um, I think with the passing of the law, and we're just waiting for the governor to sign it, the one thing that it has created that I think is so important for, um, our immigrant community and not just today, but like even years down the road where something like this may come up, is it does have that commission on where evidence can be. this may come up, is it does have that commission on where evidence can be sent for potential lawsuits. You know, because of the heinous ways that people are being treated and dragged out of their cars and some of the brutality that's going on. So looking at some of that, that's going in there. And that's where I would love to have, you know, our ordinance or, you know, resolution, where it addresses that, where it talks about that. So it's part of that, just saying, hey, we recognize that this is, this is something that we do to help you, you know, for potential lawsuits in the future. I will say respectfully, the way that the current ordinance is written, I'm not comfortable with. I don't feel that it is enough focus on our immigrant community. I think it's too focused on the city of Batavia. And so if anything, I would want to pause and redo the ordinance. If we go with an ordinance or a resolution, to really make it more focused on who this is really about. Keep some of the elements about the city in there, but really put the main focus, you know, the first thing is talking about the trust act in the city of Batavia. I want to talk about our immigrant community, how they've built our community, why they're so important in the businesses in here. So I would just want to change some of the framing of that to move forward.
Alder Person Loman.
So I, I don't want to repeat everything that has been said from October 28th meeting and some of the comments that are in support of this ordinance tonight. I do not support tabling this issue. I agree with Alder Person Loman that if you want to table it, then let's just vote on the ordinance and you can decide on record which way you're in, you're going to go. I think this issue is front and center as we have seen and we've mentioned for a very long time in this meeting and the other meeting and during the Know Your Rights meeting. This, as you see, so many communities are having trainings for their residents. There are people that are, organizations that are pulling together the resources to come up with ways on how we can help our community, whether it's whistles, whether it's the food pantries that Jen mentioned before, that are pooling their resources to deliver these items to folks that are afraid to come out. I mean, the fear is there. That's real. I don't think anyone is going to disagree with me on that. So we have heard from our community loud and clear, an overwhelmingly amount of people are in support of this. I want to remind everybody that we were elected to be representative of our community. So when I hear some of us here that are speaking about, we can't make this decision, we're not ready, let's table it, we're afraid, you know, there's a fear here at council that we're afraid to pass this, this is why we were elected. We were elected to make tough decisions. This is a tough decision that we need to make a decision on. So like I said, we heard, I printed out all the names, 760 signatures on that letter that was a part of a petition. And what that means is 760 people from our community, business owners, residents, people that moved away, they're a part of this community or came back. These people, community leaders, they want us to take action. And that action looks like this ordinance that we have in front of us. We, as the mayor spoke the last meeting, we pride ourselves in always, Batavia always helping and having each other's backs. This is an opportunity for us to continue doing what Batavia has always done. We received over 30 emails that are in support for this ordinance. I have received some that opposed it, a handful. Maybe some of you have received more. I've only received a handful. When I say handful, five or six. There were 39 speakers that were in support of this at the last meeting. Two were not. You're seeing the data. A lot of us talk about data here. The numbers are pointing in the community telling us loud and clear that they want us to pass this. Take action. We have a room full. We had a room full before. I don't know how much more the community needs to do for us to listen. Alder Person Lehman was talking about that. We need to listen. That is our jobs. That's why we are in our roles, literally. We talk about, you're not hearing it from the community. Some of you aren't sure what they want us to do. Let me tell you, I am that community. I am in the community every day, every day in the schools, every day in shops, every day when I'm teaching, every day in my job. I hear the community and I can honestly tell you, I have not heard anybody that identifies as Mexican or looks like me tell me that they don't want me to support this. Perhaps some of you have. I think Alder Person Barron, maybe you said that you spoke to two people? I don't, I don't. But I heard some people tell me that they have spoken to people in the community that identify in this population that are not in support of it. I have not heard it. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist. I'm just telling you that me, as Alder Person Loman, has not heard from anybody in that community that is not against this. They are all loud, loudly telling me that they want this to pass. Some facts that I want to share with you. Our city attorney was comfortable with this language as we received in that memo from Laura and that, and stated that we are well within our right as a city to take this step. And Laura has also confirmed that as well in those emails with questions that I respond, that I asked her. Another fact, our community is living in fear and hurting. We had educators speak to us last time to this point. Students in class are afraid for their friends, their neighbors, their family. Attendance has dropped because of the fear to be out and do, living their lives and studying. We had mental health professionals speak to this last time. The fear is real. Being in that constant state of fear will make us sick. I have been sick to my stomach. Each of these meetings that we, that I have to come and prepare and be ready to speak about this, it makes me sick that it's hard for some of us to understand that this is important, that this is action, that there is teeth behind it. We need to choose the right thing to do here. Numerous cities, another fact, numerous cities and counties have passed similar legislation. This perceived threat that we're going to be the test city, we haven't seen it. State Attorney Moser also attested to this. We have not seen that. Human dignity, that isn't everyone issue. So when we speak about rights and Alder, Alder Person Lancy, you said that you don't want to make this political. This is not political. We're talking about our human rights, our rights of our residents, the rights of the city. We are well within our right to pass this. And, you know, the last thing I'll say, you say emotions are high. If you can wake up every morning and brush your teeth and get dressed without worrying about this, that's privilege.
Really?
And point of order, be quiet.
You too.
Are you, for, for anyone to say that nobody's hurting and that it doesn't affect our community is false. So I will support this ordinance and I hope that the majority of you do as well.
Is there?
Alderman White.
Is there anything else they need from me? It's a school night.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you for coming in.
I'm more than willing to answer any other questions.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Good luck to everyone.
We appreciate you.
Alderman White, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. Apologies for not being there. Wanted to chime in and say, I'd like to make the emotional decision and, and I think our community really deserves that, but I also want to make the smart decision. If Elgin has a better proposal on the table, if there's another state level thing on the table, I, I will be a no vote tonight because I think we want to make the smart decision. I want to support our constituents, but I want to make a smart decision. If we're going to put something on the books, I want to make sure it's well thought through.
Thank you.
One last statement from me and that, there's been a lot of talk about emotions and feeling safe and not feeling safe in your house. The hope, this is not, just as Alderman White just said, this is not something that's supposed to be emotional. We're just looking at a very, the proposed ordinance basically is, you know, doesn't have anything to do with anybody's houses. It has to do with city owned property. So in terms of what we're voting on, you got to take the emotion out. We're not talking about whether you like the current president, don't like the current president. It has nothing to do with anything with what we're looking at right here. I don't know why it's constantly brought up. This does not have to do anything with that. So again, I feel that at this point in time, I like the way St. Charles did it. I'm open to discussing the way Elgin did it, but I think that this should be tabled for now and we, and we revisit it with one of those other options.
We have that question out right now with a motion and a second. Do you want to call a question and vote on that?
We're not going to have public comment?
What?
We're not going to have public comment?
On the motion to table.
Besides if we're going to have a vote tonight, so feels relevant.
I make a motion to table.
Is there further discussion? And what?
Is there further discussion?
We had further discussion after that. Everything that's happened since he made the motion.
I had my hand up. I was not, I had other discussion.
You had discussion after he made the motion.
Yeah, and, and other people spoke twice.
Okay, would you like to speak again then?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring up, you know, if we pass an ordinance tonight, we can follow it with a resolution also. I hear what you're saying, Jen, that the, the resolution can incorporate more and identify more of our, our citizens that are hurting. And I would appreciate that. They're not mutually exclusive. But again, an ordinance says, this is not acceptable in Batavia. Yes, we're going to have challenges enforcing it, but we put our foot down and say, no, we're not, we're not going that way. We demand that we live under law and order. And that's, we need, that's our job is to make sure we have laws in place to make sure law and order is maintained.
I just want to say, I think it would be very un-Batavia of us if we did not allow public comment before this vote. I agree with that.
Okay. We'll go through the list that I have and we'll do three minutes apiece.
Can we ask if other individuals that wanted to speak be added because some people came in after the sheet was taken?
You got another sheet? So if there's anybody else that wants to speak, we'll cut it off at the end of that page or else we'll be here all night.
It's okay. This is why we're here.
First on the list tonight is John Dryden.
When I raise my hand, it'll be 10 seconds left on three minutes.
I promise I'll be short. I wrote down some remarks. I do have to say though, I did not expect to be confronted with the wall of rank cowardice I witnessed tonight. It is unfortunate that we must consider a city ordinance that attempts to better protect our community from the lawless behavior of unaccountable federal agents, but we are here because it is necessary. We are aware that there are those who argue the mass detentions and deportations of our non-citizen community members will make America great again. We are aware that the defenders of these gross violations of our civil liberties argue that only criminals and degenerates are targeted by ICE and border control for detention and deportation. But we know that these arguments are demonstrably false. We know that Homeland Security has asked the Supreme Court for the right to racially profile those they wish to detain. We know the court has granted them permission to do so. That is what probable cause for ICE looks like. This means that any one of our community members who is not immediately recognizable as white, like us, is at risk of detention and deportation because of the color of their skin or the origin of their surname. This is not something you or I will experience. It was experienced by non-white people. We know these arguments are false because of the practice of federal agents detaining people at their immigration court hearings. These are people who have complied with our laws and reside here legally, and yet they are detained and deported because they are not white to fill a quota, to fill a body count. We have been dismayed by the lawlessness of these federal agents. We have watched them instigate violence and chaos in Northern Illinois as they pursue their goal of ethnic cleansing. We have watched them shred the Bill of Rights while they chase their fevered dream of white supremacy. And we should, we should help them, make us less free. We should assist them in dividing and destroying our community. What American who loves liberty would agree to that? So we do the obvious thing, the necessary thing. We pass an ordinance that prohibits our community property from being used by federal agents to terrorize our community. We ask federal agents to identify themselves on our community property so that they are accountable for their actions. We stand up for our own sovereignty. We stand up for the whole community, citizens and immigrants alike. This ordinance is the least we can do. It requires but a teaspoon of courage.
Up next will be Dick Deheen, Delean. Sorry if I get names wrong.
First speaker, I go to bed at eight, so I'll be quick here. My name's Dick Delean. I'm a Ward one resident, six years and a quick happy Veterans Day to everyone, especially any veterans that served out there. So thank you guys, appreciate it. I'm here regarding the Batavia discussion regarding civil immigration enforcement. I've reached out on the official city website to my Ward one alderman, Jennifer Barron. I've gotten no response on multiple times and multiple issues, including the displaying of the flag that represents the physical mutilation and chemical castration of young children. No response from you. Alderman Barron, in your March interview in the patch, you listed your number one issues, community engagement, community needs and preferences, and actively listening with concerns and feedback. You mentioned tonight powerless, that's what it feels like when you reach out to your alderman and you get no reply. It was also sad to see most of you applaud the other day, someone wearing a T-shirt that read Chinga La Magra. That was a pathetic showing from our alderman. I might've said it wrong, but that's how I read it. So tonight, I'm a hard no on any civil immigration ordinance as it is a massive waste of time. Seriously, they're just going to go across the street from you lab, across from your house. It's easy. They're not dumb. Maybe focus on saving taxpayer money. The sixth ward alderman, you should run for mayor, seriously. You, you're the only one who made any sense tonight. You talked about virtue signaling and our alderman over here, alderman Ward one wants to create a big, huge line. That's a quote. That doesn't even make any sense. And Mayor Shoki, you've been here since 1981, 11 terms, you're under 12 terms. Why didn't you pull this in 93 to 2000? They deported 12.2 million people. In 2009 and 2016, they deported 5.3 million. Why didn't you guys bring it up then? I don't understand this. And here's a few arrests since Operation Midway Blitz, by the way. Sexual abuse of a minor, we don't want them around. Sexual assault against a 15 year old child. Sexual assault against a 15-year-old child, rape, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, conspiracy to transport illegal aliens. One individual had a charge of sexual assault of a minor plus multiple DUIs and a child fondling charge in this area. We don't want them around here. Forty-two-year-old Somali who had convictions for multiple assaults, multiple DUIs, larcenies, and rape. Twenty-one-year-old Venezuelan gang member with aggravated assault with a firearm. And a 33-year-old Colombian man charged with aggravated domestic battery and DUI. We don't want them around. We don't need those people around. Put me in the no column. And also, we had the city administrator, you guys are going to leave it in her hands. She didn't even know who to talk to. She was going to go to the federal government and she's corrected by the state's attorney multiple times. And last thing, you brought up facts. You said 760 signatures, that's 2.8% of our population. So that's a hard no here and a hard no for the other 97.2% as well. So, thank you.
Next is Howard Miller.
Howard Miller, moved to Batavia in 1988 and I'm a proud member of this community. I'm going to, for this message, I'm going to refer to MIGRA agents instead of saying ICE or Border Patrol or whoever. It's, MIGRA is an immigrant community term for immigration issues and for Border Patrol. Since we don't know who these agents are who are coming here, and here's an update on St. Charles, today, just before Thompson Middle School was getting ready to dismiss, MIGRA agents grabbed someone on the Thompson campus and hauled them away. We have no idea whether he was shown, we don't know what he was charged with, we don't know if he was shown a warrant. All we know is he was taken away. And by the way, the St. Charles Police Department allows MIGRA agents to stage in their parking lot, something we want to avoid here. In September of this year, I and a few other members of the 1 million rising tri-cities joined with local residents in another one of our neighbors in West St. Charles. And what we did is we drove to apartments when school buses were dropping kids off after school to make sure that those kids got safely in their houses because MIGRA was around grabbing people. We were on call to drive around town to spot and/or report of any suspicious MIGRA activities in the area to let residents know that MIGRA was there for them to stay indoors and be careful. We hand out cards, know your rights cards in Spanish and English, which tell citizens what their rights are, what they don't have to talk to MIGRA agents, they have the right to remain silent, and what MIGRA can do. And MIGRA has to have warrants, judicial warrants. And other members from Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles, some of them are here tonight, have joined the rapid response team. We are on call to go out and we cannot confront MIGRA, but we can escort residents to their homes or cars. We're allowed to ask to see badges and warrants and video arrests and treatment of detainees. I was able to ask questions of a MIGRA agent at the King County Judicial Center the other day. I knocked on his window, which I wasn't supposed to do, but a little bit of good trouble is okay. He rolled the window down and I asked him, why are you illegally parked in a handicapped parking spot? His answer was, I have a warrant. I asked him if I could see the warrant. He pulled out his phone and showed me the warrant. I said, I need to see the signature on that warrant. He scrolled down to the signature and I informed him that it was not a legal signature, it was an administrative signature, it was not judicial, it was an illegal signature. They are also...
That's, you're beyond time now.
Can I just say one thing?
You're already a minute past.
Okay.
We have other people that would like to speak.
Okay, I just want to say, we're here, we're watching, and we're voters.
The next up is Haley Schoonemann.
Ted Schoonemann would be next after Haley. Hi, I'm Haley Schoonemann, Batavia High School, class of 2008, homeowner and taxpayer and voter in Ward Five since 2021. I'll keep this brief, hopefully impactful, hopefully not too emotional. The strongest attraction I heard to this ordinance when I was at the last city council meeting was twofold, that it's redundant to the Illinois Trust Act and that it's symbolic and therefore not enforceable. I want to address each of these hesitations. Firstly, there are several laws and ordinances that are redundant. That's the nature of a democratic government. It serves many different levels, municipalities, state, and federal authorities. I see no harm in reinforcing Batavia's commitment to a statewide policy, especially when its constituents are directly and repeatedly demanding it. Secondly, I think what went unsaid during so much of the last discussion and what was continued today during our very long discussion, we know that this is mostly symbolic. I think ordinance or resolution, it is kind of moot legally, potentially. ICE agents are already operating outside the bounds of the Constitution. Whatever we can do to put our names in the history books is doing the right thing, even if it's writing down and documenting, is literally the least that we can do. It is the least that we can do. I think that the symbolism that what we pass is justification for doing it. I want to show that Batavia stands with its neighbors, not against it. Passing this ordinance is more about showing that Batavia is united against bigotry. It's more about that than being able to enforce any sort of legal action against those that wish to tear this community apart. As this administration continues to find problems where there are none and seek violent solutions to those problems, I hope that Batavia will stand on the side of peace. I don't think we have any business promoting peace on earth when we can't even make the small step towards ensuring a slice of it in our own community. Please vote in favor of this ordinance tonight. I am not interested in kicking this can down the road any further and putting our own council people at risk by delaying a vote. Vote tonight, vote yes. Thank you.
Schoonemann, and then Matthew Zingle.
My name is Ted Schoonemann. I am the father of Haley, who was just up here. I second everything she said. I also second everything John Dryden said and this gentleman over here as well. I've been a resident of Batavia's Fifth Ward for 25 years. I support this ordinance. Ordinance. Regardless of where you sit on this issue, due process is a core fundamental right in this country. Apparently, the US Constitution doesn't mean anything anymore, but it does apply to everyone in this country, whether you are here legally or not. Developing a modern and sustainable immigration policy has been a bipartisan failure for years. This current administration is creating chaos and collateral damage by letting ICE conduct these raids. This injustice affects everyone. When one group of people does not feel safe in their own homes and towns, no one is safe. Please vote yes for this ordinance. The other question I have is, who are they coming for next? Think about it. Thank you.
Matthew Zingle.
Hi, my name is Missy Ham. I'm here to speak for Matthew Zingle, who's traveling, he wasn't able to be here tonight. I want to start with something simple. Every household has rules. The law says people can't steal or trespass, but we still set our own boundaries at home, who we let in, what's acceptable, and how we protect the people we love. We do that not because the law isn't enough, but because every home deserves clarity, safety, and peace inside its own walls. Our city is no different. The Illinois Trust Act already lays down important protections, but it's broad. It doesn't tell us exactly what happens if federal agents want to use our buildings, our parking lots, or our resources. A local ordinance would fill those gaps. It's our way of saying clearly and confidently that city property belongs to the people of this community, not to outside forces, using it to sow fear or confusion. Justice families create house rules that build on the law, local ordinances build on state and federal protections. That's not duplication, that's how our system is meant to work. Each level reinforcing the next, each one closer to the people it serves. Passing this ordinance isn't about politics, it's about protecting trust between neighbors, between residents and city staff, between law enforcement and the people they serve. It's about making sure everyone feels safe enough to call 911, to report a crime, to walk into a city building without fear. We can honor the Trust Act and strengthen it locally, the same way every caring household reinforces the rules that keep it safe, because this city is our home and setting our own house rules is how we keep it that way. Thank you.
Up next will be Sheri Das, and the next one would be Kate Cunio.
Hi, I have been a 32-year resident of Ward Two. I spoke last time. I agree with everything everybody has said that is negative about ICE. There are two things I just want to address beyond that. One is that my understanding from what the council has said here is that our city attorney has said that this ordinance is legal. Okay? So all the talk about, is it legal, is it not legal, what can we do, blah, blah, blah? Our lawyer has said it's legal. Secondly, no, this isn't going to make immigrants or my daughters feel any more safe in Batavia. They get it. This is just Batavia saying, we will not allow you to stage on city property. And it is, as someone mentioned, the least we can do. It is, shows that Batavia is on the humane side, on the compassionate side, on the moral side of this issue. But will my daughters still carry their passports in Batavia? Yes, they will, because they are worried about being picked up. But this will make them feel that Batavia at least cares about them. Okay? And if that's being real sentimental and symbolic, then so be it. But I do think this is a concrete, not necessarily symbolic, thing that Batavia can do. Thank you.
Kate Cunio is next, and then Jeremy Damito. Okay, Kate had to leave. Is Jeremy here? And then Josie Damito?
Jeremy Damito, resident of the Fifth Ward for the last seven years. I support this ordinance, and it was just my intention to come up and say that, but then, and I brought my two children with me to witness local government inaction. Here's an opportunity for each of you, 14 alderpeople, to actually do something, do something meaningful. And I know you do, on the agenda, every one of those items are meaningful. And I appreciate what you do, I appreciate that you're volunteering your time for it, but I encourage you to do something. Be an example and actually take a step. Don't just kick something down the road because it's easy, it's safe. You know what? Take a stand, do your job. It was kind of disappointing that only two, two people up there on that desk have said, were referenced, that they actually wanted to hear from, you know, their community, the people they represent. Shouldn't you all be doing that? Have you done that? I don't know. I assume you do. I trust that you take your job seriously and you do that. But it would be nice to know that you're actually going out there, you're speaking to your constituents, your residents, and asking them, how do they feel about it? Because that's what your job is, is to represent them and then to do something. And that's what I encourage you to do, is to enact this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Josie Damito? Get it right this time.
Hi, my name is Josephine Damito. I am a local student here in Batavia, and I came to support the ordinance to keep ICE out of our town. Batavia is represented and is a safe, welcoming, and encouraging environment for all, not just certain groups of people. And if we let these people into our towns, that would change the image that is represented of Batavia, which could severely have impacts on how people see us and how we feel about our own town and the safety of our community. And keeping our residents safe has always been a Batavia priority. And if we sign this ordinance to keep our residents safe, this would strongly support the idea and the belief that Batavia is a united and safe community. Thank you.
Spencer Damito is next, and then Mary Damito.
Hello, I am Spencer Damito. I'm a 14-year-old eighth grader at RMS. I spoke about this issue on October 28th. I was one of the speakers there in support of this ordinance. So with that being said, I have my speech room out here, sorry. I hope that we can, I truly hope that we can proceed immediately with this ordinance. This is not a deal with it later issue, this is a deal with it now issue. We can't just wait for it to solve itself. This, this is not going to go away. We have at least three and a half years left of this and it's not going to go away in that time. We need to deal with this now. My friends are terrified. I'm terrified for them. Please give them the security in going to school, knowing that their community supports them. Thank you.
Mary Damito, and then Jared Swackey.
I promise I'm the last Damito that you'll hear from this evening. I was rather hesitant about bringing my kids here tonight. You know, as a parent, you kind of want to shelter them and protect them from what's going on in the world, but unfortunately, it's a lost battle there. They know what's going on, they see it, they hear about it from their friends, and they're scared, and they're scared on behalf of their friends. I won't belabor the point, I agree with this ordinance. I would implore you to take a stand and do what's right. Thank you.
And then Sarah Dreiser.
Hi, my name's Jared Swackey. I'm a resident here of Batavia. I get it, I don't want to be here. I don't think any of us want to be in this position to be debating this, right? It's nine o'clock on a Monday, that's rough, right? And here we are, me talking to a mostly white board, right? In a mostly white room, in a mostly white town. It's inconvenient to have to pass something like this when there might not be anything to gain from it, right? To step in front of the spotlight or step into the limelight in this moment, right? It's inconvenient, especially when we might be able to, when we're alone, think about how it doesn't impact us. But that's exactly when you need to step up, right? That's exactly when you need to take action, in those moments when you want to... That's exactly when you need to take action, in those moments when you want to send a message that we're going to support everyone, not just the 90% of us that look like us and that we think won't be impacted, right? We've talked a lot about symbolism, right? That flag is symbolic. There's nothing enforceable about that flag. That flag doesn't have ordinances or laws that it can pass, right? And yet people get teary-eyed when it waves in the wind, right? Symbolism has so many meanings. It means so much in so many ways, right? So I think the idea, and I would even tie that into emotions, right? At the end of the day, the things that we do here, the work that we do, should raise emotions. If you're not emotional about the things that you do, find better things to do. So I support this ordinance, whether symbolic or not. I think it sends the kind of message that I want to send to my peers and to my community and to my neighbors, which says, I've got your back. Whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I've got your back, and I'm willing to step out there into an unknown to make sure that you know that you are in the right place. You chose the right place by coming here to Batavia because we protect our own in the ways that we can. And nobody's confused about what we can or can't do. Definitely, nobody's confused about what we can't do. So thank you.
Sarah, then Maura Hershaw.
Hi, Sarah Dreiser, Ward Five resident. Lots of great things said tonight. I just wanted to add my voice in support of what has been said. I know it's not perfect. I know it's small. I know the outcomes are convoluted and unsure. But what we do when we want to see change is we take a step, and this is the step that we have in front of us right now. So we take this step, and then we see what's next. And I just want to encourage all of you to take that step tonight and pass the ordinance tonight and do what's on the table in front of us.
And then lastly, it would be James Curtis.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Maura Hershaw, and I'm wearing two hats tonight. On one hat, I am here on behalf of my constituents, many of whom are in this room and who asked me to be here tonight, and many of whom were too fearful to be here tonight. And I'm also here as a Batavia resident of Ward Six. I voted to protect Illinois communities from unlawful immigration enforcement at the state level as a state representative of the 49th District. I am a proud co-sponsor of House Bill 1312, and I'm looking forward to the governor's signature on that bill as it has an immediate effective date. Every day since Operation Midway Blitz started, I have met with rapid response team members, community officials, school officials, and we go through the list of who was taken the day before or the morning of. In all of those debriefs, it has become clear that immigration status does not matter, due process has no meaning, and the rules of the game have simply changed. But elected officials like myself and all of you in this room, we have the privilege to comment on the rules of the game and change them in any small ways that we can. It's difficult to collect data when communities are under attack. But from what we do know, very few and possibly not one single judicial warrant has been issued during Operation Midway Blitz. We know that close to 70% of the people who have been detained or disappeared have no criminal history, and if they do, it's for a speeding ticket. We know that they are detaining U.S. citizens, they are detaining people with work permits, parents with children in their car, just like they did in Aurora last week where they left a baby alone in the car to take the parents away. Again, there is no due process and no rules. I really want to thank members of the city council who brought this ordinance forward. Laura, you are putting yourself out in front of this issue. I commend you for that, and I thank you for that. I know that ordinances are not magic shields. They are a standard of care and a belonging for the community. So as a Batavia resident, I'm asking you to stand with our immigrant community and to vote yes on the ordinance tonight. We took that stand last week in Springfield, and I'm asking you to stand with us tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Council. I was really only moved to speak after hearing the gentleman earlier say that the amount of names on the petition is about 2.8% of the total population, right? Well, it's actually about, conservatively, 12% of the total amount of people who voted in the last municipal election. So those numbers matter. I'd also like to just be on record as supporting the ordinance and supporting the professional staff who drafted it and put it up for consideration. They did a really good job in looking at the lay of the land throughout Chicagoland. And, you know, my day job is promoting tourism up and down the Fox River Valley. Like, this stuff, it's making it really hard for people to do their jobs in the hospitality industry. And so what I would like to see eventually is more communities in the Fox Valley adopt similar ordinances to this one. So, you know, again, we're not pioneers here, but hopefully, we're making it easier for our neighbors to do the right thing as well. Thank you.
First motion we have, that's motion second, is to table this for this evening.
I want to proceed real quick. A yes vote would take this item off the agenda for today, and no further vote would occur. Is that correct?
Correct.
If we vote yes, the ordinance is off the agenda. Right. I just want to make sure.
At that point, so everybody knows, thank you for...
I have clarification again about why the motion was made to table it again.
Motion to table it.
Or further discussion?
Well, if you were listening earlier, I said, I want this table because I don't like the way it's worded, and I believe we should utilize something similar to what the St. Charles website has on their website, which sets forth all of the principles and all of the feelings that we want to get across as the city of Batavia. I think that's sufficient because we already have the Illinois Trust Act in place.
You're not asking to table the ordinance, you're asking for us to not move forward with it and just do what St. Charles is doing.
Asking to table the ordinance.
For a future vote.
And I'm asking to table the ordinance and bring back something different.
Basically, come back with a resolution or different wording, or it's not like it disappears the conversation. This specific ordinance...
If you table something, though, it's to come back for...
It could come back to the next...
Potentially.
Cow meeting.
I would say that ordinarily, when something is tabled, that there is something to be done in between the time that it is next taken up. If it is something to, where it's, if you just don't want to see it, that would be voting on the ordinance and voting it down.
Right. This is, I made my proposal. I think there needs to be tabled. I don't like the way it's worded. I think we should do something different. I'm not saying that we don't have to do anything. I'm just saying, I don't like the way this ordinance is worded, like something, a different proposal.
And that would come up at the next committee of the whole meeting, correct, Roman?
Whenever you want it.
Right.
My request would be that...
I'm sorry, I want to hear the answer for a moment on that because we have tabled things in the past that have not come back on agendas. So I want to hear the direct answer from the attorney, please.
Yeah, so if you vote to table it, technically, it's off the agenda. There's nothing specifically that would bring it back to another cow unless Alderman would want to ask city staff to bring it back to a cow for a specific purpose.
It disappears unless we affirmatively take action to add it to a future agenda.
Correct.
I think Alderman Solfah asked for that. That he wanted it in a different form, and it would be a proposal to come back in a different form. So...
My understanding, Robert's rules, though, is that that's not part of our current motion we're voting on. And so it would take an action in addition to this vote to have it back on an agenda.
I said, motion for table. And Alderman asked what my reasoning was. I didn't have to give any reason.
Absolutely correct.
So I gave a reason, and my motion to table is...
Yeah, I do believe I'm agreeing with you.
Alvin Farinbach.
Just for the audience, so if we were to pass this tonight, and something were to pass in the Illinois Senate or, you know, legislation, what have you, we can update the ordinance. It's not like if we pass this ordinance tonight, it's set in stone forever. We can always amend it at a later date and what have you.
I believe that's correct as well.
Getting more clarification before we start voting. So if we vote yes to table, it comes off the agenda, and also, we would then vote again in the city council meeting that follows this to table it again? No. It just comes off...
It doesn't have a positive recommendation.
Okay. If we vote no to tabling it, then we vote on the ordinance as it stands tonight.
If someone makes the motion.
Okay, thank you.
And if the original ordinance has been amended, we already voted on that.
Add the word judicial in two places, two paragraphs, two, one, eight.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second. I think, who seconded the... Lancy did. Okay. Then we have a motion to table. So a yes vote would table it and remove further discussion tonight. If we vote no on that, then we go further into the agenda with it.
Correct.
Okay, roll call.
Solfah?
Hi.
Barron?
Yes.
Lehman?
No.
Loman?
No.
Peeper?
No.
Farinbach?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
White?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. Barazza?
No.
Lancy?
Yes.
Beck?
No.
Malley?
No.
Malone?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, six. Six, yes, eight, no.
Okay. So the motion stays up for this evening. Agenda back out. And now I would entertain, are there any other amendments that would...
That would be my question. I would love to hear from folks that are on the fence, what other amendments need to be made, what other changes do you envision? I want to know and get a sense of if this is voted down, it's... I have lost faith that it will come back in any other form. So I am looking for explanations and ways to compromise, hopefully on a draft tonight that we can get passed tonight.
I will add that I feel that the mask portion in the ordinance is going to put us at risk because we cannot enforce that. I also, to remove their face coverings, to ensure visibility of their badge, that is not something I feel that we can really put through, and that could put us in a very tight spot. A warrant shall be present. I also feel that this is something that we really can't control. So the requirements, where it says the requirements of the federal immigration enforcement, that doesn't make me feel comfortable because we really can't force the federal government to do something except to not commandeer on our property. As I stated earlier, I felt like some of the resolution part or some of the beginning part was more focused on this city as opposed to who this was really directed for. So I'd like to see some of that wording moved around on that. And also, there isn't anything that speaks to the Senate Bill 1312. There's some language that could be put in there that kind of connects that, bridges that together. And then, you know, we talk about, you know, reviewing this. If some of these things aren't in there, I would love to review this again pretty quickly. And then, and this is just some of the layout part of it, under Section 1, under scope. I would like to switch B and C because, again, it's really looking at, we're talking about the ordinance, it's just kind of the flow of it, where the prohibit the lawful use of the county-owned property. Again, as I said, a lot of this is, I'm okay going with the ordinance, I just don't like some of the wording and how it's laid out. But really, the part of Section 2 is what really makes me nervous. I would love to see taken out, and then also enhance some of our definitions, because I think some of those definitions are just very vague, and I think that we need to spill out of what is city-owned property, what is civil immigration enforcement, and judicial enforcement.
I'm sorry, city property, what was the second one?
City-owned property, civil immigration enforcement, judicial enforcement, Illinois Accountability Commission, and also Illinois Trust Act.
I am comfortable with the way that the ordinance is written. I think that we've spent a lot of time going over the language. We've consulted different attorneys. I'd like to motion to vote on the ordinance as written.
We have a motion by Loman, and a second by Malley. Discussion. Alderman Beck.
Just to go back to the masks and the badge numbers, obviously, that's been a component of many other state and local, it has been, it's been in many states. So is that something, Roman, that you flagged as something that would be a problem for the city? Is it something that the state's attorney brought up in her review?
In our review and discussion with the state's attorney, it's kind of one of those things, and how you go about enforcing it, and discussion with city staff and how they would plan to implement it, basically just be a request from the city administration to remove their masks. If they don't comply with it, I don't think the city's going to take the next steps. But it's mostly just a position that the city wants to take, that we at least have the authority to request that's remove their masks and make their badges and badge numbers identifiable to whoever they're interacting with.
And then a second follow-up question, Jennifer, that I'm directing at you about the, I agree that I want, you know, a glossary attached to most of our ordinances to define and clearly articulate, so there is no, there's no ambiguity in what we mean with the words that we mean. But do you anticipate any of the examples that you explained having debate among us? If that was something we could add to it, we could append to it after this passing, a glossary of what those mean, do you anticipate any of them being controversial, or could we pass this and add that at a later time?
Kind of like what you said, that once it's off the table, we're not going to see it back. And so that's my concern of, when are we going to see this back and have this discussion on this?
Many of us would commit to bringing that back and discussing it and agreeing on it in order to get this passed tonight. That is an easy concession to make.
My concern is, we've had until Wednesday, and this is the first time that we're debating this, and I understand what the potential rush is, but I think that if there's some things that we are looking to add and change to that, waiting another week, you know, to work on this, I don't feel like we have really had a time to work on this as a community, as a council together. This is the first time that this has been brought to us as an ordinance, and we're being asked to, in two hours, to say, now we're going to implement this ordinance, that are going to affect, for me, not just short-term, but long-term. This is a long-term issue that, as obviously my neighbor mentioned, this has been something that's been going on for years. And so if we're looking to just push this through, this is just a short-term thing, and I would rather really make it a long-term, if we're going to do it as an ordinance, as a law, and take a ground.
I hear you. And so there's, I think that the community that has spoken, I think would allow us that, kind of give us that grace to say, we rushed in two... kind of give us that grace to say, we rushed into passing this. We did it since, you know, we, we had a draft since Wednesday, and we passed it because we understood the urgency and we understood the, the pressure and the emotions that are behind it. And we were going to get something done, and we were going to show our community that we cared. And I think that if we then got some time and some clarity, and we got new state language that we could reinforce, I think the community...
A lot that's happened in a week.
Totally. I think the community would understand and allow us to reopen that discussion and make amendments and make changes to language, to make changes to procedures in response as we go along. I don't, I think that this is the first of many conversations that we're going to have about this. I want to at least start the conversation on the right foot, on the foot of action, on the foot of doing anything. I don't think that that backs us into a corner that we're not going to be able to get ourselves out of. Like, I don't think there's anything in here that pushes us into a place that we can't, that we can't defend. I can defend every word in that. I will defend every word of that. I'll defend my vote all day long. And for generations to come, I will stand by it. But I'm also willing to change it and react to the moment that we're in, whatever that moment is, good or bad, like...
I'm not comfortable with the procedure. I'm blatantly honest, I'm not comfortable where Laura's saying that she's the one out in front. I think our city administrator has more important things to do than to be answering calls.
She says she doesn't.
Are you two done right now? Okay. Alderman Barazza?
I would like to go back to the part of the ordinance that talks about the masks and the badges. Roman, you mentioned that, so Laura goes out, you were going to request, hey, can you, you'd be like to remove your mask? And if they don't, which they probably won't, you said we probably wouldn't go to the next step. What would the next step be? It is the same as everything else going along with judicial and going through the court system? Okay.
But I could record and I could report.
Sure.
And that would be something.
Okay.
It's very clear. I support moving forward with this tonight. And I think in the future, in the very near future, we can continue this discussion with a welcoming ordinance and with making other statements about how this ordinance will fit in with other future resolutions or a welcoming ordinance that can just, and we can just move, continue moving our community and our town that, that way. And also, all of us smaller local municipalities making these decisions do influence at the state level. Sometimes state comes, filters down, and sometimes we impact what happens that direction. And so the more of these local municipalities that are taking these stance and saying this is matters, this is important, we, we want to see our state move in this direction, and that will have influence. And so I am just going to stand with my second that we move to vote on this tonight.
Lohman?
Yeah, so, you know, I think I hear the hesitance and I, and I understand it. And I know that when asked earlier that, that there was some desire to wait. I think we should listen also to the sponsor of the bill we were thinking of waiting on. The sponsor of the bill just stood before us and said, you don't got to wait for us, pass it now, okay? One thing that that tells me too is that it might be important for us to revisit this. So I'm willing to state publicly, in front of all the alderpeople who I see every week and my neighbors, that absolutely I'll revisit this, right? If we run into challenges, I will publicly commit to be the second or the third to get it on an agenda, to make sure that we, we get this right. I do believe though that tonight it's going to be important to get, to get this passed. And then we can, you know, if we got it wrong in a definition here or there, I think those are good discussions to have, and we can, we can revisit that. And so another thing I'm hearing here is that we, you know, we weren't speaking directly, or may, I'm trying to pick exactly the right words, but I guess I, I won't find them. But we're, it's not oriented enough to the impacted individuals, the folks actually impacted by the ICE things. I think a lot of us recognize that we're not the targets here. And if, if that's the case to folks, I apologize that we aren't focusing enough in, in our wording. Just know that our actions are such that we are thinking of the impacted communities at the time. I'm happy to revisit a welcoming ordinance or find a way to just re, make that reaffirmation, which is important in our strategic plan to that. So again, this is just me kind of saying that, that I hear the reservations and I don't, I don't want to dismiss them. I think action today is important. I think we can revisit, and I'm going to make the public commitment that I will revisit that with you, that I will be the one to, to back up that pre, getting it back on the agenda to think about it after we pass it tonight.
Alderman Sulfah?
There's been several comments now about wanting to vote on it as worded. I cannot, I don't mind Section 1 for the most part. I don't think it's worded the greatest. Section 2 and section, Section 2 definitely is not, I can't support, if this, if that's going to be included in the ordinance, I can't support it. And Section 3 is not worded correctly either. I mean, I'm just looking at the way, it's not worded correctly. It should be more, it should more closely align with the, with the Illinois Trust Act in terms of Section 3. Section 2, I just think, is not appropriate. Section 1, like I said, for the most part, if we're going to, you know, if we're going to have to vote on the situation, I would say, fine with Section 1, no Section 2, no Section 3. But if the overall situation is going to be, you have to vote on it as worded, I have to vote no because I can't agree with Section 2 and Section 3. Section 1, I'm, it, it's pretty close to what, you know, the Illinois Trust Act says. I'm, I'm pretty good with that. But the wording's wrong in Section 2 and Section 3, so. I'm not against the whole situation, I'm just, this ordinance isn't proper.
Alman Malley?
Yeah, again, I, I think we have an opportunity to pass this ordinance here, and then we can improve on it. We can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. If we vote no, it's much like tabling, which, by the way, according to Roberts Rules, tabling something for the purpose of killing it without a, a specific postponement time to redo it is an unfair prac, unfair, unfair procedure under Roberts Rules. I would ask that we pass this so we can come back and refine it. If we vote no now, it's done and we've let down our constituents.
Unless we do a motion to bring it back, refine it in the next week and bring it back next week to COW.
There's no COW next week, it's the 25th. Oh, there is a COW next week? Oh, that's the budget?
This is a special meeting. Alderman Baronbach?
I, I'm a, I just want to clear something in my mind. Keep in mind, it's late, we have like, you know, 10 minutes before 10 o'clock. So when it comes to, my understanding is, once you talk about an ordinance in, in, in the COW, then it's automatically on the agenda for the next city council meeting, correct?
Sometimes.
Some recommendations.
Depends. If there's more information that would be needed to support the ordinance or not, then that would be, we have delayed things.
Yeah, we've delayed it to another COW.
My, my concern is that we're giving the impression that we're, from what I just understood, we just, we're not tabling it based on the vote we just took, right? So as of right now, it's going to be on, it's going to be in the city council meeting, correct?
Immediately following this meeting.
Following this meeting, we're going to have another city council meeting. But if, but if we don't have a city council meeting tonight, it'll just be on the next one, most likely.
But if we vote no, then the city council meeting goes away.
Right. So if it, if it has a recommendation for approval, or if it gets voted down and there's no other changes recommended to it, it goes on the next city council meeting. But if it gets voted down, but there's a direction to make some type of amendment to it and bring it back at a future meeting, then the next meeting that it's going to be on is, will be a committee of the whole meeting in order for it to be voted to be recommended for approval by the city council.
So, so the reality is that during the COW, our, when we vote on motions, it's really a motion to send to council with positive recommendation.
Recommend to council.
To recommend to council with positive recommendation.
Right. Because you can't take any final...
If it gets voted down, it doesn't go on unless there's a motion made to send it, to, to postpone it.
Postpone it.
For refinement.
So we, we've cleared the table motion, and now the next, the next vote is going to be, does this go to the city council meeting?
With approval.
Okay.
Which happens to be tonight.
Let's vote. Alderman Baron?
So, maybe, okay, there we go. I would say maybe for us to move forward, let us pull out Section 2 at this point, and then make that a part of a conversation that we come back. Because as I said, the other stuff, for me, it's just moving some of the items around. And if this is something that we're committing to, to come back and speak to, I believe that that would then put Alderman, Alderperson Sulfah and I on the list to vote for it, with Section 2 being removed.
Yeah, I'd also want Section 3 removed because that's not worded correctly either. But Section 1, which is what most people have been talking about and worried about anyway.
But we could refine that.
Isn't there a motion and a second to vote on the...
As worded.
But I'm just answering to Alderperson Beck's question on that.
There's already been a motion by Alderman Lohman to vote on it as worded.
With, with amendment that was made earlier approved.
She could withdraw. If she wanted to make an amendment.
Yeah, if we wanted to make any changes on it, we would have to ask Alderman Lohman to withdraw the motion, so then we could go further with it. Alderman Beck?
Wanted to say, in case people in the audience didn't have the language in front of them, or if any of us don't have the language in front of us, that removing Section 2 is the enforcement action on city property. So it would remove out that kind of meat from the, from the ordinance.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry.
That would be the enforcement of a warrant and then the face coverings. But there, there would still be the, in Section 1, it would talk about being on our city property and staging and possessing a location. That's under, under Section 1.6C. The ordinance does, does not prohibit lawful use of city-owned controlled property for purchases other than, where does it say that? Well, Section 1.1, no city-owned or controlled parking lot, vacant garage, or applicable property should be used for staging, possessing, location, operations based for immigration. That's in Section 1. Section 2 is about the requirements of enforcement for federal civil immigration enforcement on our property.
Malone?
Thank you. So I, I heard a lot about how unenforceable it is, and now I feel like we're taking the enforcement mechanism out. I, I would prefer to keep all parts of Section 2, but I think I would be willing to remove Section, Section 2, Paragraph 1, Part B, that's the face covering component. I'd be okay removing that, if that's what it takes to get it done today. I think the judicial warrant component of it, for documentation purposes, to kind of make sure that the governor's immigration task force can, knows when they're using civil warrants and judicial warrants, that's an important reporting mechanism. I'd prefer that one stay in though. But I, I could support amending it to remove the face coverings.
Okay, I'll agree.
Okay.
Can I, can I add one thing? Because I, I went through and marked this up again. I, I printed out the Guidance on Illinois Laws Governing Law Enforcement Interactions with Immigrant Communities. And part of this, in the, the first page, it talks about, in 2021, the Illinois General Assembly expanded protections and obligations in both these laws, which would have been the Trust Act and the Voices Act. And it says that the Wayforward Act, the Wayward Act also authorizes the Attorney General of Illinois to conduct investigations and bring civil enforcement actions to ensure compliance with the Trust Act or the Voices Act. So there's the mechanism already in state law that we could utilize, that if we had to have somebody videotape that and have civil enforcement happen after that, we could do that. We wouldn't have to make a new rule for it, that even if we pass this tonight, tomorrow they show up, is that going to make the community safer? That's one of the reservations that I've had all along, is that no matter what we do, are we truly making the, the community safer, or are we just saying it? And I get that it's emotional. I get that it's political. It is all of those things. But in the end, I want to do something and I want to not just feel good about it, I want to know it actually has teeth and it can do something to try and stop what's happening. And that's what I would like us to do. And if that means we pass whatever we decide on tonight, and then next week we come back with a real explanation of what the new House bill is, even before the governor signs it, so we can understand how we could utilize that and maybe put heat on him to actually sign it, so it is something we could use to help protect people, then I'd be all for it. And I, you know, I guess that's where I'll stop. Alderman Lehman?
Thank you. Just a reminder again, that State Representative Herschauer, who is neck-deep in all of this, supports the ordinance as written. I do have a question for Alderperson Baron. So if we take out Section 2.1B, are you in favor of voting on this ordinance tonight?
Yes.
So then, we would need to take the current motion off the table to make that amendment before we vote on the ordinance?
It's a friendly amendment.
What?
You could see it as a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment?
We'd vote on that amendment first, and then we would vote on the ordinance in total. And I guess in, in my mind, it's a moot point because I think the vote, the, the votes are there to pass it regardless of what anybody else wants to do. So. Another question.
I called the question.
Well, you can't. Alderman Lohman has to. It's her motion.
I think anybody can call the question.
Yeah, anyone can call the question. Oh, she, do you could get a question?
I would like to...
I have to pull up my Roberts Rules, be specific, so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not too worried about that. I just, it's typically whoever makes the motion will get to call the question. You guys both got it out.
I'd like to proceed with the vote.
And that is as written. You'd like to vote?
As amended with the judicial warrant.
But not the 2.1B. Right. Right.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm confused. She's not amending, we're just the one amendment.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
So the motion and second out there is to approve the ordinance as written with the one addition of Section 2.1A, adding judicial to the word warrant in both places where it appears in A. Okay, roll call.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Baronbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
No.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Sulfah?
No.
Baron?
No.
Lehman?
Aye.
Nine yes, five against.
We'll go to city council this evening with a positive recommendation.
Question. When is this something that we can get back on the agenda to speak about, to make adjustments, since I've been told in front of the group that they would be willing to do that?
We can't do it at the next COW meeting because that's a budget meeting. And I don't want anything else on the agenda but the budget, so we can get through that. If we can agree on that.
Jen, I'd be very happy to follow your lead on it.
I have a question about that. From what I understand, when a, a motion has been made for the ordinance to move to council, then it goes to city council meeting, and then there we vote on it. And if we have amendments to make, which I'm happy to refine it, we can, once it's passed at city council, then we can continue to bring it up.
No, once it passes, it passes in the form here. This would be the place to have had the amendments. That's why I asked, if you wanted to allow a friendly amendment, we could do that now.
It's not the last chance you get because we amend our ordinances all the time.
We can pass tonight, we change them all the time.
Yes.
It would just be...
Meeting, which is the meeting after this, for the resident... That's what...it's getting confusing here. So...
We will be voting in a couple minutes at a City Council meeting to actually pass the ordinance.
And if we vote yes to vote for that ordinance, we can still amend it. Yes. So, for everyone that's leaving, I know it's really late, but we're going to be voting to officially pass it in the next meeting after this. So we're having another meeting tonight. I know it's super late, but that's when it's going to officially pass, and we can still amend it later at a future discussion meeting. But tonight, we're having another vote.
But we're not going to be able to amend it tonight.
Right. We won't amend it tonight, but I also will go on record to publicly state that I support, would support, amending it and refining it at a future cow once we pass it at our City Council meeting immediately after this meeting.
I could have just done that.
Okay. We will move on then to 8.3, which is Resolution 2025-127r, authorizing property and liability insurance renewal. Alvin Barron? Clear the room.
Okay, I'll go ahead and just start. So Resolution 2025-125-r, authorizing property and liability insurance renewal. The city's...City of Batavia's 2025-2026 insurance premiums are projected to increase by 10.12% rising from $784,000 to $863,000. The largest increase is in property coverage due to higher insured values and auto coverages reflecting an expanded fleet. The package policy also rose 13.94% aligning with the city's larger budget and liability exposure. There were a couple minor decreases with cyber liability and aircraft liability, while excess workers' compensation remained flat under the two-year agreement. The coverages will remain with the current carriers of travelers, Trident, Ascot, and Midwest employers maintaining continuity despite moderate cost growth.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? One of the things we do every year right at budget time. Okay, if no questions, would you like to make a motion to recommend to council?
I make a motion that we recommend the Resolution 2025-127-r to City Council.
Okay. We always need insurance.
Motion by Barron, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 14 to 0. That could go on the consent agenda.
Same for my next three?
Probably not.
Wait, not to put them on there. So, 8.5 is Ordinance 2025-53, amending the city code related to sanitary sewer usage rates. This ordinance updates the sanitary sewer rates effective January 1st, 2026. The change includes an 8% increase and a new monthly capital fee of $3.75 for residential and $7.50 for commercial customers. These adjustments ensure significant funding for sewer system maintenance, regulatory compliance, and long-term capital improvements. The additional revenue will reduce reliance on bond financing while maintaining reliable service. Did I get everything?
I think that covers it.
All right. So I recommend that we approve ordinance 20... or we recommend to Council Ordinance 2025-53, amending the city code-related sanitary sewer usage rates.
Second.
The question? Oops, sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
I should have asked this before. Just for clarification. So we're voting on these ordinances for the adjustment of the usage rates. I'm just curious why we're doing this before we have more budget talks?
Because we have to approve the rate increase, and then that directs our budget talk.
Not vice versa.
Similar to what we did with the wage and salary ordinance, approved it before so that you know going into the budget that these things have been approved for.
Or else you wouldn't have the rates in which to spend on the things that are in the budget.
Yeah. And in my mind, it was flipped. We decide on what we want to do with the budget first and then find the money for it, but...
And we have to have this presented to you before we wait till... Because sometimes it's like December 1st, when the budget's approved, so we have to have this presented to you guys before.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we could change the rates at any time. It's not necessarily part of the budget. We're just discussing it as part of the budget, but we would have the ability to change the rates in our...any of our utilities.
And typically, the rate increases are over a multi-year period when we know we're going to have to do something in the way it was called out in this, that it was, you know, for infrastructure and all the things that we know are in both the capital budget out a couple years and in our operating budget. So that's why...
Related to the budget, but also unrelated to our current budget discussions.
It's kind of like I never liked the fact that we pass the wage and salary ordinance before we do our, you know, negotiations with the unions. But when they look at our budget, they know what's in the budget, and, you know, they're going to try to get all of it every time.
Any other discussion or any questions? We have motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that one carries 2. And no, those probably shouldn't go on the consent agenda. I think we should talk about...
It's a nice turn.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have to be honest and open about it and let everybody know that they're going to pay more next year. And the next year.
Electric.
Okay.
All right, 8.6. Ordinance 2025-54, amending the city code related to electric usage rates. This will increase the Batavia electric rates by 3% effective January 1st, 2026. This is the first adjustment since 2025.
2015.
2015, sorry. The increase will help cover rising operational costs and fund essential capital improvements, while full rate study will be completed by... in 2026 by our consultant, the Brattle Group. Updates include modest increase to base fees and energy and demand charges for all customer classes. And again, customers will see these new rates reflected on their bills starting January 2026. I move, re-recommend Ordinance 2025-54 to Council.
Second. I can buy... White? Need a discussion?
Did I hit all the highlights, Andrea?
The only thing that I would add is that we are currently undergoing our cost-of-service study with Brattle Group, so that is still to determine our rate structure. So we may come back this upcoming year with additional changes to that. But for right now, we need to fund our projects. So, we're proposing this 3% increase right now, and we'll be back with that study as the Brattle Group continues, so sometime mid-year.
But I think it's maybe a silly question. But, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about a data center and how they were going to be buying a whole bunch of electricity from us, and we were going to get, you know, a nice chunk of that in our service fees. Explain to me why we should be raising our rates now when we think we might have some cash down the line that might fill this particular need at that point?
Next year.
No.
Well, and so, yeah, tell me that story. So, tell me on that.
There, in the master services agreement, there is a schedule to reimburse the data center developer for the cost of the off-site improvement. So in the early year, there isn't sufficient income coming in from that. But when you look out over a period of 20 years, it is a lot that will be there. And, yeah, so this is to fill that gap in the short term.
In addition, we have not raised any rates for electric in 10 years.
Yeah, and so we're not anticipating any sort of...any data center funds coming into our electric utility for a long enough period that we need a stopgap essentially. Thank you.
Six, seven years.
Gotcha.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Alan?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. I was up and down because I like answering my own question and then saying, "No, it's a dumb question." But with the capital... the fees that are baked into all three of these for the capital improvements, some of them are brand-new, some of them are addition... some of them are going upright. So we've had capital fees before.
They had a fee on electric, but not on sewer and water?
Okay. That's not technically correct.
That's why she's here.
It's not a capital fee in the electric. It's just increasing the monthly charge.
Sure, okay. Yeah, I had my hand up the previous one, too, and then I put it down. So it applies to the other two, not this one. Sorry, I'm out of turn. But in general, when I look at the long-term capital improvement plans and how much is being pulled out of those capital funds, you know, do we ever see... Do we ever see an existence where those can go away? That we paid off our...you know, we paid off our one-time capital. We've got enough reserves. We can pull those back in the future when we don't need them and reinstate them when we do?
I mean, the short answer to that is yes. But what we're trying to do, what we've had to borrow for projects that we've been doing the last several years, and what our hope is, instead of borrowing, that we get that savings account that we're paying for future capital projects with.
And we do have a...I could speak for wastewater. They provide us with a long list of maintenance projects. A lot of lift stations were put in with the developments. We have...we had 19 storm...or sanitary lift stations. We increased one additional one at the... with the latest renovations at the wastewater plant. So some of those...the pumps and all that and the housing are being looked at this year. Zach is doing one next year. We're carrying over to complete the other one. And those are, you know, $300,000 each for this new system that we're doing. So we have quite a few of those in town that are coming up to end of life in service parts and computer systems and all of that that are aging out and just need to be replaced. So that is helping provide funds for that.
And anytime we can borrow, though, for projects at 0% interest, like I know we're really good at getting those loans, we'll opt for that route instead, right? And keep the savings account growing so that we can, when we need to use our taxpayer dollars, our fees, that we will. But we've got those options still out there, right?
Yes, but we still have to service that debt, right? So we're still going to, even at 0%, there's an annual payment that gets made. And so the preference would be to borrow as little as possible if we have sufficient reserves built up from that capital fee.
It's likely that we'll continue to borrow. For the wastewater treatment plant, we've already borrowed $72 million, and we have another $75 million of improvements to make. So that right there kind of signals we're not going to have end-to-rate increases for the sewer system. The water system has a lot of aging water mains and improvements needed at the water treatment plant. But it's possible that we might be able to get that to a point where we don't have to keep increasing rates. And electric, we have...the last few years, we've needed a rate increase. But we were delaying it because we kept thinking we're going to have a rate study, a rate study. But then the whole IRP process delayed that. And we really can't wait any longer because we've been completing projects and using the reserves. So we need a rate increase at this time. And then it can always be changed in the future, lowered in some categories, raised in others, depending on what the studies say.
Right, and some of the projects that we're doing are undergrounding the power lines, which are more expensive than just replacing in kind and place. So those are directives from council. And then we have to replenish those reserves that we're going into for electric. So I kind of wrapped them all up in one, but they're all individual items.
We have a motion and second on... Ordinance 25-54 to recommend it at the council. That's the electric rates. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And then we'll move on to 8.7.
This is Ordinance 2025-52, amending the city code related to water usage rates. This will update Batavia's water rates effective January 1st, 2026. The change does include a 3% rate increase and a new monthly capital fee of $3.75 for residential and $7.50 for commercial accounts. These adjustments are designed to support ongoing maintenance, regulatory compliance, and major water system improvements outlined in the city's capital plan. Anything else to add to that?
Where's it?
Oh, sorry. I motion, we recommend to council ordinance 2025-52.
Second. Second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Did Bob vote? I didn't hear him.
I was aye. Sorry, just whoa.
It's okay. I wait so that I make sure that you get your vote in. Okay, that passed 14. Your council? Keep going on your show, Jen. The next one's yours too.
Oh, I got it.
Oh. Oh, City Service, I'm sorry.
The next two are closely connected. It's authorized a three-year contract with Dakra Tech LLC for their e-ticketing municipal enforcement system modules for an amount not to exceed $118,000, being resolutioned 25124R. And Chief, I think your memo was very explanatory, but I think you do a much better job explaining than I would.
Sure. Yeah, this is a kind of end-to-end enforcement software system. Dakra Tech is widely used throughout the area. Really, this is e-ticketing from ticket issuance. So squad cars would be outfitted with mobile printers. We would utilize their software applications to import data through our CAD system, reducing the amount of time, reducing error by officers as they're trying to do data entry, and reducing the amount of time it takes for them to import that data, and then issue citations. But it does a lot more than that because then on the backend, it integrates with our records management system. That data is then uploaded into our records management system, can be transferred to the circuit clerk's office. So tickets kind of make their way through the system without all of that administrative handling performed. Right now, we have a very slow administrative manual process. This is going to be a huge time saver for us, really kind of a very powerful tool for what I would consider to be a pretty low price when you look at it annually, a cost of $36,000 per year. So.
I think it's a matter of efficiency and the technology. And we're already using that vendor Dakra with some, with the records management, correct?
But we are not using Dakra Tech currently. Dakra Tech already has integrated with our records management system, not ours specifically, but other law enforcement agencies in the area utilize New World Records. That's what we utilize. They've integrated with their systems. So they, we know that they have the patch to integrate with ours. Same thing with our Sun Guard CAD system. They've integrated with Sun Guard CAD. They have the capability to do so. So we are confident that they are able to do so into our CAD.
I'll just make note that I think it's nice. Dakra's a local company. They're out of Itasca. So it's just a nice semi-close to home.
Any other discussion?
Oh.
I'm reading the memo, and I'm sorry if I missed it. What did we actually budget for these next two? Are we within budget?
We are within budget, yeah.
Is there any under budget?
So we are under budget, but that is because we are, they charge a monthly fee of $3,000 per month. We budgeted for all of 2025. We're just now getting to this now at the end of 2025. So we have the money. We'll actually roll money over from 2025 into 2026 to help cover some of those additional costs. But yeah, we're within budget for 2025. And then the out years, 26, 27, those will need to be budgeted as we go through the budget process.
I had two comments. One is, I just confirmed Laura, that it's in IT, I think, this year, and next year it moves to the police department.
Correct.
So we're putting the IT stuff in the departments that it really belongs in. Am I correct, Peggy? Is that where it's, okay. So that's right. And then I was gonna say, and don't worry if the printers don't work, they still mail you the ticket later. Yeah. Even in the middle of Wisconsin, they do that. But the printer didn't work. I tried to get out of the ticket, but didn't work. It was actually my wife's car. I made it all the way back with the vet and didn't get in trouble.
All right, any other discussion? I move that we send with the recommendation to council, resolution 25124R, authorizing a three-year contract with Dakra Tech LLC for their e-ticketing municipal enforcement system modules for an amount not to exceed $118,000.
Second. Motion by Malley, second by Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? That passes. That would be 14. No? Thank you.
Next one is closely related. It is for the printers with Printech Resolution 2025-125R, authorizing the purchase of 12 Printech VP420 squad car printers and two Printech 1I820 mobile printers from Ultra Strobe Communications for an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Just curious, does this upgrade the whole fleet? It's just like a...
This is, this covers our entire marked fleet.
Okay.
Administrative fleet doesn't really.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah. Yep.
12 squads.
That's what I thought.
12 marked squads, yes.
And if they needed a portable one, like for truck enforcement, they could take it in the truck enforcement? Is that what the portables are for?
These will be installed in the squads. So the portable ones, there's a, we have 12 marked squads. Two of those are supervisor squads. Those supervisor squads will actually get two printers. The mobile printers are a eight-and-a-half inch, so it'll print a full sheet of paper. And will can be utilized out in the field for printing like other documentation that we may have, you know, not had in the squad car or something, domestic violence paperwork that we want to be able to issue to a victim or something like that.
Next question I have, one more. Is that also a local company? So if we need service on them or warranty work or anything on the printers, is that local?
I believe they are local. I don't remember what, where they're out of.
Okay.
Yeah, by move that we send to council, resolution 2025125R, authorizing the purchase of 12 Printech VP420 squad car printers and two Printech I820 mobile printers from Ultra Strobe Communications for an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Second. Motion by Malley, second by Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, who says we can get stuff done after 10? You're out of Benton Harbor, Michigan, so. Okay, not too far, unless it's snowing.
Yeah.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Okay, this is speed project status. We're looking forward to the open house celebration at the Batavia Interface Food Pantry and Clothes Closet. That's on November 21st from 3:00 to 7:00. You can check our website for more information on that. And Lauren Underwood, who is responsible for providing us with the $3 million community project funding grant that made it possible, is going to be in attendance that afternoon. Plan Commission met on November 5th. They approved a design review for the Winding Creek Park. That's a Geneva Park District park with requirement to add two bike racks to the site. And then also, they reviewed conditional use for video gaming at Gammon Coach House at 3 South Batavia Avenue and have made a positive recommendation to city council. This will be on the November 25th COW for committee consideration. Also, there will be an open house on November 19th here. It is at 4:30 PM and then a public hearing at 7:00 PM for the South River Street Corridor Plan. Super excited and congratulations to New Moon Vegan, who received their Illinois-made commemorative plate on November 5th. The Illinois-made program was created by the Illinois Office of Tourism in 2016 to celebrate the diversity of small businesses across the state and support them by encouraging travel to all regions of Illinois. With this new 2025 class, there are currently 277 makers in the Illinois-made program, and 12 of those makers are in the area of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, of which we are a member. Thanks to Human Resources, they hosted a really great wellness and benefit seminar on November 5th. They had about 13 vendors in attendance and 80 to 90 of our employees came here to stop by and learn more and ask questions. In IT, they just wanted me to mention that the annual Know Before Cyber Security Awareness Training has been released. And so if everyone could please do that, either the refresher course, or if you're newly elected, you'd participate in the introductory course. Yes.
Are we getting an email? I know Howard sent out like a save the date kind of thing.
You will receive your very own email with a link to take the training online. The Peace Bridge ramp sidewalk has been completed and was reopened last week. Restoration at the street level is ongoing and will continue for another week and then wrap up for the season. The bridge is going to be closed all winter due to the railings not being available for 12 weeks after the completion of the course. So that whole winter, that ramp is just going to be closed. Remediation work is ongoing at the Webster Street site, and site restoration is going on at the wastewater treatment plant. In fire, Lieutenant DiNicolai, Lieutenant McDonald, and Max attended the Center for Public Safety Excellence. It's a program that is related to the accreditation process that is part of the Fire Department Strategic Plan. And also firefighters, Balantyne, Barucki, and LaFreddy, attended the responder intervention team training. This is where the first responders are required to go in and rescue a fellow member of the department. So both very important training. And the course includes classroom lectures, firefighter fatality case studies, drag and carries, breaching, heavy lifting with hydraulic and pneumatic tools, and hands-on scenario-based training involved, involving a firefighter mayday. That's all I have, unless anybody has any. Yes?
The Hubbard Building, the historical commission approved demolition, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So now they'll be hitting, they'll come to us when?
On the 25th?
I'll say the 25th.
Yeah.
We don't have the date yet. They were, we were originally having them come next week, but we
Where's that?
We had some issues with some of the parking lot and what's gonna happen with the parking lot after demolition. So we were trying to work that out with them before we get it on the agenda. So it's mutually agreed to that we're delaying it, so.
I'm sure I heard it right. You said the Peace Bridge ramp will be closed, but not the bridge?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Peace Bridge, open all winter.
Right.
Ramp, closed all winter.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it's an ADA issue not to have that railing.
No, that's fair. I can tell.
That was my question as well. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we now need a motion for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
We are going to stretch for a few minutes before the mayor can have the gavel.
How long is the break?
A few minutes.
You're welcome.
Arguing about one time. And I think it was Kevin Roman.
Hey, we were called to order the special city council meeting for November 10th, 2025. I guess I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
I'd be delighted. Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Farenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. 14 present, none absent.
Thank you. In the interest of time, item two, the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, I would just ask that Batavia enjoy a special blessing for the Christmas season, and we are ever thankful for the many acts of kindness and community support that are now coming to forefront of all these people that want to help others in need at Christmas time. So it's a wonderful place to be in and a nice town to be part of. And so I'm very thankful for that. Amen. Moving then to item number four, anybody wanted to speak in the microphone was being asked to remind you to please come forward and use the recording device. Matters from the public, does anybody in the audience wish to address this about anything? Guess not. Items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda? I don't know of any. All right, moving then to seven, the consent agenda.
I think I gotta add the consent, or the executive session.
We have to add an executive session to this meeting because we removed it from the other one, so we didn't have to clear the room.
Well, we're not quite there yet.
Well, no, we have to add one to this.
Oh, okay.
So we have to vote on that because we're changing the agenda.
You want to make that as?
I will make that motion, that we add an executive session. Collective bargaining.
Motion in second by Alderman, Wolf, and Malane.
Malone.
Malone. Any, clerk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Thank you. Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
I assume we'll do that under the end of the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving then to the regular agenda. We have resolution 2025-132-R, authorizing emergency repairs to well number nine.
So yeah, well, number nine is one of our biggest wells, highest producing wells. And back in July, there was a catastrophic motor failure. So it needed removal, inspection, repair. So this is seeking approval to do the emergency rehabilitation.
Any care to make a second on that?
I'll move that we pass. I'll move, I'll move to pass, unless anybody has any questions, we need the well working.
Yes.
I move that we pass resolution 2025-132R.
Second.
Motion in second for the emergency repairs to well number nine. Any discussion on that? Clerk call the roll.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Thank you. Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
14, yes, no, none, absent.
Motion approved. Moving to item 8-2, a resolution 2025-131-R, authorizing emergency repairs to the sewer cleaning equipment.
This is another, another piece of equipment that experienced a catastrophic failure in terms of vacuum and fan assembly. It's a truck that's used by streets, water, sewer, electric wastewater. We need it working. We need it repaired. That's my summary, unless anybody has questions.
We don't have the same guy working the well and the sewer.
No. This is just, just so happened that we had catastrophic failures on two different things.
These were months apart, and I believe that truck is scheduled to get repaired or replaced next year. But you can't trade the one in that we have without it working, and you can't get there to when the new truck comes in without fixing this one.
So moved. Our public works director is at the podium. Do you have anything to say?
I was just about to say she's not there.
Yeah, I think Chris did a great job. These are, this is something that needs to be replaced and repaired. We should have the parts within a couple days to two weeks, and then we'll be back up and running. And in the meantime, we have emergency backups if need be. But that truck is, already has a long waitlist.
Second that. Motion.
We have a motion in second for the sewer cleaning equipment purchase, repairs. Clerk call the roll.
Lancy, right?
Yep.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Thank you. Barazza?
Aye.
14, yes, no, none, absent.
Good. Moving then to item 8.3, ordinance 2025-065, amending the municipal code adding Title VII, Chapter VIII, restricted use of city properties. Who's got this one?
Alderman, Barron?
Barron?
I got my notes. I forgot.
I got you. If you want me to?
Nope, I got it.
Okay.
All right, so this is an ordinance amending the code. This was created a new section of the Batavia Municipal
Oh. Sorry. I got my notes. I forgot.
I got you. If you want me to...
Nope, I got it.
Okay.
All right, so this is an ordinance amending the code. This was, created a new section of the Batavia Municipal Code to restrict city-owned property from being used for civil immigration enforcement. It ensures that federal immigration actions occur, cannot occur on city property without a warrant and proper identification, and prohibits of city data for such enforcement, and directs staff to post signage and report violations. The measure reinforces the city's commitment to transparency, community trust, and safety while maintaining compliance with lawful warrants and criminal enforcement. And we just had a very lengthy discussion earlier this evening regarding this. Yes. Oh, moved.
Second.
Yes.
Motion in second for the approval of ordinance 2025-065. Any further discussion from the council? Alderman?
Yes, thank you. Again, I am going to reiterate, where I do care about our immigrant community, I just don't feel that this ordinance does enough for them and their protection, that where it also merges with our state legislation that was recently passed. I feel like this was a very rushed ordinance with us only having four days and two hours to discuss it. I know that alderpeople have mentioned that they are willing to bring this up to discuss this in the future, but again, I am not going to vote in favor of this. We did have an opportunity to amend it, and that was not done, so, you know, that will be a no vote for me this evening.
I'm the same way. Like I reiterated earlier, I don't like Section 2 or Section 3 the way either one of them are. First of all, I don't think Section 2 should even be there, and Section 3 is worded incorrectly. Because there was no amendments to get rid of Section 2 and Section 3, I have to be a no vote. I mean, I agree with Section 1, that basically follows the Illinois Trust Act, but Section 2 and Section 3 are not worded, Section 2 shouldn't be there, and Section 3 is not worded appropriately. So without those amendments, I have to be no on this ordinance as worded.
Make care to make a motion?
I just had a quick question. So if someone were to potentially be, call it detained, arrested unlawfully, so to speak, where was I, where was I going to go with this? So, well, it doesn't matter. We're good to go. Never mind.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just a comment. So there's been a lot of discussion around this, a lot of passion around it. For some of us on city council, we did find out about this just because we were getting emails and stuff like that. So I think when the alderperson say they're willing to bring it back up, I believe them. So this is, so I'm assuming this will come back up. Also, you know, we're also free to help bring it back up if, you know, going across the board, so. That's it.
Any else? Okay, we have a motion in second. Kirk call the roll.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
White?
Aye.
Barazza?
Hi.
Lancy?
No.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
No.
Sulfah?
No.
Baron?
No.
Lehman?
Aye.
Nine yes, five no.
Motion's approved. All right, city council updates. I think we've already been through these.
I think we've been through those. Nothing, nothing since the last one.
The last seven, 10 minutes.
I move we adjourn.
It's been a great Monday. It's my report.